Hello, everybody. Thank you for your patience. If you wondered what happened, we commenced at 6:30 for executive session. There's nothing wrong with your computers, but we needed to do some, we had to have a conversation about pending litigation that needed to be done in private. So we are just about ready to start our regular session. I just want to make sure everyone's a go, everyone's in who needs to be in, and our man behind the curtain is ready for us to formally start. I'm getting the nod.
You're good to go.
Okay, all right. So for the benefit of all you who have just joined, thank you for your patience. I'm Karen Camfield from the Board of Selectmen. We are meeting on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. This meet, the public portion of this meeting is starting at 6:56 PM. And as many of you know, we are working remotely in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and Related Emergency Executive Order. The town meetings will be held remotely until further notice. This meeting is recorded. It will also be shown live on Situate Community Television, Facebook Live, and the meeting will be, the recording will be available tomorrow on our normal Channel 9 and on YouTube for Situate Community Television. Obviously, if you're on this call, you've found the Zoom link, and you can participate when there is public participation portions of our meeting. If you are watching this on Facebook Live, thank you, but you will not be able to participate. You'll have to go to the Town Agenda and to the Zoom link. As you all know, there's something else going on tonight. So our goal is to be as efficient as possible. And to accomplish that, we have, we have a few more interviews this evening for our Diversity and Equity Inclusion Committee, which I just got the name wrong, but you all know what I'm talking about. And we have already interviewed over a dozen people. We will not be voting on the composition of that meeting tonight. We want to have some time to digest all of the candidates, because there are many, many qualified people who have already come up. And I know that those waiting are, will be just as qualified. So we're going to need some time. So if you are swiveling between the news on the television and that vote will be happening, I would anticipate in our next meeting. So there, that's what I wanted to let you know on that. That's all I have for that. So we will go right to Zoom-ins, which is our walk-in portion. If you would like to make a statement or have a question for the board, please go to the Participants icon at the bottom of your screen and raise hands, and we will, we'll acknowledge you and let you have your time with walk-in. Do we, and scrolling through the list, and I see no hands raised. Okay?
There is one.
Oh, there is one. Thank you, man behind the curtain. Let's see. Oh, there we are. I will, oh, wait, sorry, you already undetted. Okay, so Jennifer Kuhn, would you please just give your name and address for the record, please?
Jennifer Kuhn, at 20, Cary Litchfield Lane. And I had two comments, is that I think they missed two hydrants to flush on First Parish Road, and I didn't know who to contact.
Oh, all right. Thanks, Jen. Well, usually the right person to talk to is either called DPW or the Water Department. Jim, would you like to give more advice on that?
She can call the main office in the DPW. I'll just call down to the Water Department.
Okay, are they finished with that? Do you know if they got all the way down to Stockbridge?
They're not finished flushing. Jennifer, I can't tell you whether they finished that part, but they don't necessarily flush every hydrant. They vote, they flush sections. They can skip a hydrant, go down, but I would talk to them and find out the specifics. I know they're not done flushing. I can't tell you the specifics of what sections they're finished.
Okay.
Great. And you have another question? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, my second, it's a concern with the construction at the Senior Center project and the sidewalks for the entrance, that everything's blocked off and people are walking in the road. And now that it gets dark out at like 4:30, it's kind of hard to see people. I think they need to put up some cones or some kind of walkway for people walking by.
Okay. Thanks, Jen. I know when I drove by several times today, there was police detail there, sort of directing people and traffic. I think during the daytime, that does a pretty good job, but we'll, we'll discuss that with, with the construction people. Okay. All right. Are there any, is there anyone else? Ryan, you need to mute. If you're not muted, please mute. I'm looking, I don't see any other hands raised. So we will go on to the Report of the Town Administrator. Tim Bedrow?
Yeah, busy two days on COVID. I'm sure the board has seen. From Monday to Monday, we had 10 new cases. We had three new cases reported in yesterday. No new cases reported in today. We are still yellow. That is updated on Thursday. Norwell and Situate are yellow. All the towns around us are red. However, yesterday, the governor issued some sweeping new guidelines for COVID. They're going to affect overnight Friday. Some of the key points that people need to be aware of is if you're outdoors in a public space, you must wear a mask, regardless of whether there's anybody around you or not. Masks are mandatory at all times. Failure to wear a mask is a fine of up to $300. There's a stay-at-home advisory in place. The governor is asking people to stay home between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM. That could impact our Selectmen's meetings if we don't get through them a little bit faster, but they are asking you to stay home. That is an advisory. That is not a stay-at-home order, but a stay-at-home advisory. Restaurants must stop in-person service by 9:30. Takeout service is still allowed after 9:30. Violations of that are fines of up to $500. Liquor stores and retail establishments selling alcohol must cease selling alcohol at 9:30 at night. A place like Reynolds Package can still sell their other items, their other goods after 9:30, but they must cease alcohol sales after 9:30. A violation of that are fines of up to $500. Fitness centers, arcades, indoor and outdoor theaters must close by 9:30. Again, fines of up to $500. Private indoor gatherings will be limited to 10 people, down from 25. Outdoor gatherings will be down to 25, down from 50. And the fines for that are up to $500 per person over the limit. These are pretty sweeping regulations. There are more. There are exemptions. To see the whole list, go to masks.gov and click on the COVID updates. You'll be able to see them. You know, we've been saying this for months. People need to wear their mask. They need to social distance. Now it's mandatory. So our numbers did come down. We're in a little bit better shape than we were. But again, there's only two yellow towns right now around us on South Shore. Everybody else is red. You know, Norwell High School just announced they're going to go remote for the rest of the week because of COVID cases. So it's out there, and we just need to be more vigilant. So we ask you to wear your mask, avoid large gatherings, avoid crowds, and make sure you social distance. The reservoir is up to 33% full. That's up from 29 the week before. That's a good thing. We get over three inches of rain last week. We are expecting more, not this week, but the week after. Our usage is down to 485 from 505, so we're trending in the right direction. We are doing the flushing program. That's depending upon weather and our availability of supply. Those notices have gone out. We need to keep doing the flushing program to keep up with the progress we're making on cleaning the pipes and getting the water, groundwater situation fixed. So that will be ongoing. The Water Department will also be doing their seasonal shut-offs. We're going to do those the same as we did the turn-ons in the spring, which is no-contact shut-offs. We need, again, with the COVID spiking, we need to protect our water plant operators. So people want their water shut off, go to the town website, to the Water Department page. There's a form you fill out and turn in, and they'll make arrangements, come out and shut your water off without having any contact with you, having to be in your home. Two more things. A special town meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 16, at 7 o'clock in the high school. This is a necessary town meeting for us to reconcile accounts for the current fiscal year. There are 16 articles on the warrant, the majority of which are routine in nature. People can go to the town website and see the warrant and the recommendations from the Advisory Committee. As the town's legislative body, town meeting is exempt from the gathering limits set by the governor. We will follow all required COVID protocols in that meeting. We have additional overflow space set aside in the high school to ensure social distancing and make sure we can do it. There are other communities that have had town meetings indoors. They haven't been able to do them successfully and safely. We are confident we can do that if everybody follows the rules and cooperates. We will keep an eye on it if we need to make a change. Moderator does have the legal authority, as we did in the spring, to change town meeting, but we would have to have a discussion, because really, the alternative to being in the gym would be to switch it to an outside town meeting. It is getting a little chilly out there, but we will keep monitoring that as we go forward. One update for the board, the article on the signed bylaw. Council has opined that because the Planning Board had their public hearing so long ago in the spring, there should be a second public hearing on that article. The Planning Board will not have time to publish that and have it out for two weeks prior to town meeting. So we will be postponing that article. I think that's probably a good thing, given that of all the articles on the warrant, that is probably the one that would cause the most debate, and we will want to get in and out of town meeting as quickly and easily as possible. So I think that's probably a good thing. It's too bad. It's really, we could live without it till the spring, but it's probably a little bit better that we're going to put it off. And finally, as Karen pointed out, today is Election Day. We have a little less than an hour to get to the polls and vote. I just want to say, right now Kathy Gottes predicting about an 85% turnout. I think we were already close to that around 6 o'clock tonight, so we might go by that. Doesn't matter who you voted for, what you voted for. I think we need to really say thank you to Kathy, her staff, all the election workers, for all the work they've done on early voting, mail-in voting, in-person voting, all during a pandemic. It's been as seamless as she can make it. I think voting today went fantastic. There was a huge line this morning when I went by, but her staff and she have done really an amazing job considering everything they had to deal with. And I think we'll get good results out of the town of Situate tonight. But thank you to Kathy, thank you to her staff, and thank you to all the election workers who worked all day today so people could go and vote. That's what I have for today.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, on that note, when I went to check in on everybody, they said the line was down, out of the school, down around the corner, out to the entrance, or to the access road, and that those who were waiting at, when the polls opened, were in within 25 minutes. So they, they really are doing an awesome job down there. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Bedrow before we go to the rest of our agenda? Jim, I just had one question. I had a resident reach out and ask, and I think it was a good question. Given the, the parameters of the governor's newest advisories, is there, should we give some consideration to putting up some signs in the harbor reminding people that masks are required, are required under the advisory outside regardless of whether you have social distance? I know that, you know, Province Town and other communities have done that. And I don't know if you've given any thoughts?
If we have signs available, we can do that. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions for Jim before we move on to our agenda? Okay. The next item on our agenda is a 7 o'clock presentation with the Planning Committee, but I think maybe that changed. Jim Bedrow, would you like to take the lead on that?
We invited the Capital Planning Committee because they obviously will be part of this. This is the capital budget submission. Again, finding it hard to believe that I'm on fiscal year 22 already. I'm going to try to put this up. Seth, what do I need to do to put my screen up?
You're going to click the little green button in the middle, hover down to the bottom. It says share screen. You see that? Look down to the bottom, look down to the bottom of your Zoom screen. See the green arrow that says share?
That work?
That certainly does.
I'll go through this quickly, because we'll spend a lot of time on this. Capital limit the board over the next weeks and months. The five-year capital plan has over $236 million in capital requests. The two big ticket items on there are the new school and the renovations to the Wampertuck School and the water treatment plant. I think next in line would be a variety of our Fort Shore protection projects that we have coming up. We had $21 million in requests for this current fiscal year. I'm recommending 15 million of those. Biggest part of those are the water treatment system and the INI project for the sewer system down on Oceanside Drive. We continue to invest in technology. What we did with COVID, with everything going on, we are, have not been able to take all the recommendations, all the projects from the facilities plan that we did, slot them into the capital plan. So what we've done is we've actually put in a, a piece of the capital plan where we will do all the facility improvements required in the first year of that plan, which is about $1.4 million. We just listed it that way. A lot of the stuff has been taken care of. A lot of the HVAC stuff has been done as part of the COVID in the schools, so that's a good thing. But we are still going to take that plan. We will put it into the capital plan, but for this year, we're just going to take that arm and butt piece of it and make use of that plan. That's why we did it. So we need to start, we need to start following that. There's your components of the capital plan from fiscal '22 to '26. New buildings, as you see, the biggest part, and those are the new school, really, and the new, new water treatment plant. And the capital plan for this year, water infrastructure is the biggest, followed by sewer infrastructure. That's because those are a couple of big projects that need to get done. No new buildings, facility improvements, some technology for sure. Again, these are just where we're spending the money, how it's spending. I won't spend a lot of time on this. A lot of borrowing, and that's in the water and sewer departments. We are doing the borrowing. Almost everything else, with the exception, I think, of a vehicle and transfer, transfer station is cash and carry. The general fund to get roads, for sure, technology, a lot of vehicles and a lot of equipment upgrades to buildings. We use our funds that we always use, free cash, the levy and meals tax, recreation revolving. You will see some new docks, three new docks for recreation, as well as docks for Cole Parkway. The Cole Parkway is the town share of a grant to redo the docks, and we will include the three docks for recreation as part of that grant, and see if we can get those paid for by the grant. Steve's working on that. That'll be through the Seaport Economic Council. Again, roads and for sure, important. We still continue to do those. 200 in the capital plan, 550 in Chapter 90, and I believe we have money, generally have money in the operating budget also for that. So we generally invest about $1 million annually in roadway improvements. We did $1.5 million this year. Get a little more expensive, but we will continue to do that. We also make sure we couple that with our water and sewer projects. So if we do a water project or a sewer project, those roads get paved. Some people I know are looking for their roads to get paved, and we're going to postpone those because we have an upcoming water and sewer project in that neighborhood. We don't want to pave it twice. Again, the Water rais Enterprise, we applied for a grant for that. We're also doing a boat. Their retained earnings are in good shape. Transfer Station Enterprise, there's a borrowing for a loader. We also have the borrowing for the yacht jockey. There's no debt there. They're still struggling a little bit with their retained earnings because of the way we gave people a break during COVID. We're hoping that will come back, though. Water Enterprise, new water tank, which we've been talking about for years. We don't have the capacity to take our water tanks offline and clean and fix them the way we should. They're all multiple decades old, so we are recommending a new water tank. And then the Dolan Well Field, bring that online. And then some improvements, other storage tanks that will help with the TTHM issue that we had last year in terms of mixing the water. They've tested that, and the results have been very, very good for what they're looking for down the line. The $2 million annual replacement that we've been doing in the Water Department, I have not recommended that at this point. We still have $5 million approved in water pipe replacement projects that will start next spring. I just don't think the Water Department has the bandwidth to keep doing that. So we will just postpone that authorization. We'll get done what we have done. If we get it done, we could always do it again next year at his fall town meeting, but I wanted to get through the $5 million that they have before we put more money into that account. There's your long-term debt for the Water Enterprise. Sewer Enterprise, the big one is the inflow and infiltration project for the Oceanside area. We're doing the study on that now. We'll be able to get an idea of how much of that will free up in the plant. That is a real big project in terms of freeing up storage capacity for North Situate if the regional sewer does not come through, which I'm not, not real keen that it's going to at this point. So we're going to work on that anyways. The clarifier upgrade and facilities upgrade are also recommending. It's a combination retained earning and borrowing from the enterprise fund sources. And then that is the long-term debt for the Sewer Enterprise account. It's aggressive. Again, this is the third year. We've done a very aggressive capital project. We are using the funds that we set aside for capital, and as the board is well aware, any money we don't spend today is more money we have to spend later. So we're trying to be as aggressive as we can, while being as focused as we can on making sure we get the bang for our buck. Yes, was there anything you wanted to add to that?
Took me an awful long time to say no.
And I'm back.
All right, great. Thank you, Jim. I just want to remind those who are listening that to get to, to start this whole process, each department in, in the town, in the town puts together basically their wish list of things that they know need to be invested in, whether it's a truck for something, or, you know, investment in the plant, or whatever. Those are all rated and scaled, and then the final recommendations are brought forward. Did I describe that adequately? There's a lot of work that goes before this.
Yeah, there's a, each department has to put together a request sheet for each capital item that they have, describing it, describing what it's going to cost, what the long-term costs are, what it's going to save them, why they need it. They have to rank all those, which is the most important, least important of their capital requests. And then we have a scoring system that Nancy and I each score each request, and we come up with the average, and then everything gets rated based upon where they come on that scale and by which fund they come out of. So the Water Department has its own rating scale. The Sewer Department has their own rating scale. And then we go through it, and I make recommendations as to what gets funded. The one issue with what the rating system that we use is vehicles do not score well on it. So we have to make sure that we carve out some money to replace vehicles, because they just don't score well on the particular scoring system that we use.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that. I just wanted people to understand that this is extremely thorough and, and, you know, measured process. Before I ask my questions, I direct the board, if you have questions about the presentation. We will be going through these very, in very much more detail later. This is sort of our, you know, snapshot of what's coming down the road. Ms. Connelly, did you have your hand up?
Never mind. Details later.
Okay. Andrew?
Yeah, would it be possible to, to have that PowerPoint either on the website? I mean, since it's been public now, just so folks can take a look at that?
Sure.
I think it's great. It's a great job. I think it really helps explain. And I just want to reiterate, again, just for clarity for folks at home, as you said, that the equipment, I never realized how important some of those, what's it called, the yard, not yard Barker, what's it called, the yard?
Jockey.
Jockey, and how they like with this storm and, and clearing things. Just people at home understand how critical that is, especially in our area. One, just a question of clarification. When we talk about roadways, does that always include, I know not every road has a sidewalk, but does that include a sidewalk? No, that's, they're separate. Okay.
No, not, not every road would include a sidewalk. A road that has a sidewalk would probably include, depending on the condition of the sidewalk, either replacing or restoring that sidewalk. But, you know, side roads in neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks, we wouldn't put sidewalks on those.
Yep, just for clarification. So thank you for the work on that.
Yeah, and the sidewalks are really getting to be a real expensive part of doing some of these roads over.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board on the Capitol? Okay, I just had a couple of just quick comments. One thing that is similar to Mr. Goodrich is that, like every department, there's always more need than we can spend money on. But I'm a little concerned from, just from the feedback we're getting from residents, that some of the road repairs are in danger of becoming, you know, really bad, just like some of the buildings that weren't repaired. And I, and I think that might be something we, I'd like to see a little more detail on when we go through this process, is, you know, are we prioritizing enough to keep our roads from getting so bad that they're going to be really expensive to repair? The other question I had was there, there's no debt on transfer because they're, they're about a skin of their teeth now, but we're proposing borrowing. I'm looking at Nancy. She can't, probably can't tell. We're proposing borrowing for the, for the transfer station, and can it support it? How's that going to work?
It can support a borrowing, because we're going to split up the cost of some of these pieces of equipment they need to buy. They need to buy almost a half a million dollars' worth of equipment in the next three years. So if their retained earnings bounce back, then we could start paying some of that off before we long-term borrow it.
Okay. And I'll, I'll hold the other questions till we get into the details. Any more questions from the board?
Karen, as you said, this is the first step. I filed my recommendations. The Capital Committee will hold hearings on every single one of those. The Board of Selectmen will discuss every single one of those. They have to go to the Advisory Board. So there's three or four steps where people can have input and discussions on the plan before it actually goes to town meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. And because this is the first step, then I think that we can postpone having any public comment at this point, because it's pretty high level, and we haven't gotten into the details yet. If there's some strenuous objection to that, we will move on to our 7:15 agenda item, which is to discuss and vote a special event for drive-in movie fundraiser for the Course Foundation. And Amy is right there. Oh, look, you're already on the screen. Hi, Amy.
Hi. Thank you for having me.
Could you give your name and address for the record, and tell us about the, this fun event?
Sure. I'm Amy Puschel. I'm the president of the Course Foundation. I live at 23 Cairo Circle. This event is a community event and a fundraiser for the Course Foundation. It's going to be, we usually host, we usually do a North Pole Express with the MBTA, but due to COVID, we aren't able to do that this year. So we decided, it's said, to do a drive-in movie theater at the Gates Parking Lot. So we've contracted a company, and they will have, they will be playing the North Pole Express movie. And we, it's, there'll be two showings, one at 5:00 and one at 8:00, and there'll be 62 cars per showing. Each car will be parked with one parking spot in between, and there will be about four parent volunteers at the event. And it will be on Saturday, November 21st.
Okay. So the board did receive the backup, which includes diagrams, and that you're working with the police. You'll have a police detail?
Yep.
But otherwise, the resources of the town are minimal?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we just need the, we will just be using the Gates Parking Lot. Like you said, we provide, we've paid for the police detail ourselves, and won't be needing, won't be needing any sawhorses or garbage cans, because we are requiring everybody, for the most part, to stay in their cars. We have paid, and we'll have a porta potty from Graham delivered that morning, and that's been taken care of. Yeah, and that's about it.
The only question I had that's come up because of yesterday was, Jim, do you think that there's anything in the governor's, I mean, your, your last showing is at what time, Amy?
So our last showing is at 8:00, and the movie runs about an hour and a half. So it should be over about, and then we're having a, like a little quick hello from Santa and Mrs. Claus after the video, which shouldn't be more than a couple of minutes. So I would presume that the movie would be over about 9:35.
Okay. And people just have to skid out a lot to that?
Yep.
Does the board have any questions about this event? No? Sounds awesome. Great. And I think you've already put tickets out, and there's not many left, right?
No, we actually, yes, there aren't any left. We sold out. The 5 o'clock show sold out in four minutes, and the 10, and the 8 o'clock show sold out in about 10 hours.
Wow. So you're going to really, really bummed if we don't approve this, huh? Wow, so you're gonna really, really bummed if we don't approve this, huh? All right, well, everything, I think the application is in order as far as I can see, and the board doesn't have any questions, which is a good sign. So I will entertain a motion on this matter.
Move, approve a special event permit to the Course Foundation for the Polar Express Drive Drive-In Movie Night at the Gates Middle School Parking Lot on November 21st, 2020, from 3:00 PM until 11:00 PM.
Moved by Ms. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Connolly. We are required to do roll call, vote on every vote because we are remote. So I will ask Michelle if she will do that.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
And the motion carries 5-0. There is a second motion, which we all love to see, which is a request to waive the special event fee of $100. I will mention to the board that we do talk about this, it has nothing to do with this particular application, that we've gotten sort of setting a lot of precedence. So I am going to request that we discuss this next meeting as a policy. Is it the right fee, under what circumstances will we waive? So that we can be consistent about how we approach it. But we're not having that conversation until next week, so as Amy mentioned, they're using very few resources and they're requesting to waive their special event fee of $100. Does the board like, would the board like to contribute to this conversation?
Ms. Curran? I think that's a good plan. I think we do need to tighten it up a little bit, but certainly don't want that to be on the shoulders of the Course Foundation. So I'm happy to make a motion if there is no other commentary.
All right, please do.
All right, move to waive the special event fee of $100 for the Course Foundation's special event to be held on November 21st.
Moved by Ms. Curran, is there a second?
Second.
Second is Connolly, is there further discussion? Seeing none, we will need a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
No.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1, and we will definitely take this up, Mr. Vignani, next meeting. Good luck Amy, thank you for organizing, it's a great event. I'm so happy to see stuff like this. Our next, our next item is to update on the CPC Mile Marker Restoration Project. And there's Craig right there, look at you jumping in. Very, another very exciting project. So Craig, would you like to just let the board know how things have gone with the project?
Yeah, yeah, the project is complete, all three markers have been cleaned up. The seals have been, new seals have been put on them. And the main reason I wanted to get, to get on the agenda tonight was that I had also done a rubbing of one of the markers, the one at the Coasette Line, and put one of the seals inside and framed it, and wanted to gift it to the town. And I'm not sure where it's appropriate to put it. I don't know, the Little Red Schoolhouse, the, maybe the new senior center. Have you all seen it?
Beautiful.
I have, yeah.
It's, right now, it's in the town administrator, in the Board of Selectmen office. It's absolutely gorgeous, and thank you so much for doing that. It's a, it's just
It was a great project, it was, it was a lot of fun doing it. And if you've been up by the North River, where the rest area is, that's where the, one of the markers has been moved to. And the other, the other marker that was moved is, went from the Coasette Line to across from Mary Lou's in North Situate.
I'm just gonna quick share my screen so that everyone can see. This is from the, I think this is from the Mariner, is it?
Yeah, it was in Marin.
Sorry, I don't know what I'm doing, I don't know if you can see it or not.
Yeah, we saw it.
We saw it, okay, very quickly.
So yeah, it's all complete. It's all, it's all complete now, and I just was, I just wanted to get on the agenda to donate that to the town.
Well, I would absolutely entertain a motion to accept that donation, and I would, I, there are, there, I think it's, I personally think that it needs to find a, a home that, you know, everyone can enjoy it, so we'll have to do a little research on that. Whether, you know, it's the senior center, the library, the schoolhouse. My personal opinion is it needs to be somewhere where everyone can enjoy it, so.
And I did, I did a write-up as well that can go along with it, so it kind of explains what it is.
All right, well, we'll definitely circle like back on that and figure out a location and announce it and make sure we do that. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept this generous donation? Or Mr. Rosenquist?
Move to accept the generous donation from Mr. Rosenquist for the Tursan Tannery, I never can say that word, milestone markers, with the, thanks to the Board of Selectmen.
Motion by Ms. Connolly, is there a second? Mr. Vignani? Thank you so much, it's phenomenal. Is there any other, anyone else like to make a comment about the work?
Craig, it's beautiful, yeah.
This is the sort of thing, somebody sees something that needs to get done, and they dig in and they do it, and they find the funds, and the town is along for the ride, and we so appreciate it. So thank you for doing that.
Yes, thank you very much.
We'll need a roll call to accept the donation.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Absolutely, yes.
That is five plus one to zero of acceptance.
Now I have to find another project in town to do.
Absolutely. We will do that.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, Ms. Connolly.
I would just like to say that thanks to people like Craig, who came to CPC a number of years ago with this idea, it's, CPC doesn't just do really big things, they do small quality-of-life things that make the town so special. And to have people like Craig who take up, you know, a challenge to do something and bring, bring it to people's attention, it's just a great thing. So I just want to thank him.
Thank you very much. It was a great project.
I saw it for the first time, and I loved the first, I just looked at, that is awesome. I didn't have the kind of, and then I said, oh, now I know what that is. It's really, yeah, I really want people to see it, it's pretty cool.
Cool, yeah, I'd like to see where it ends up.
All right, well, we won't surprise you, we will, we will discuss that with you when we have a chance to think it through a little bit.
Okay, great.
Great, all right, thanks. All right, we're ready to go on to our next item on the agenda, which is to review the Veterans Day Celebration Plan. Is, there's, I see we have Kim Stewart, is Dawn on as well, or just Kim? Oh, we can hear you, okay, Dawn's hiding in a non-video. All right, Dawn, you want to, you want to kick off, or?
Well, so through our VAC meeting discussions and working with Kim and Steve at the Legion, we discussed honestly the options for Veterans Day. Unfortunately, like you said, with COVID, we cannot participate at the Citro-Cupcake Club with the nice catered dinner that the Legion always puts out. So what we're gonna do is, they're gonna fall back and do what I did for Memorial Day and do a Veterans Day video. So I know Seth and Steve and they all met today and started recording it, so. So we'll have that ready to go for Veterans Day again, and Citro TV will broadcast that. Also, I'll let Kim talk more about what the Community Christmas and the VAC are doing together, which is, I'm not gonna steal her thunder, which is great also. And then I was gonna talk also on November 13th, and Kim could probably add to this too, that the Citro Food Pantry, Marie Murray was at the VAC meeting too. And they're gonna have an event November 13th from 11:00 AM to 12:00 PM, or at the Food Bank, Food Pantry, for veterans, giving them out a box of food and a small gift, and there'll be refreshments and music, so. So just another kind of event for the, for Veterans Day that will be extended out all the way to November 13th. So that's what we're doing. Again, Kim can come on and elaborate and talk about what the other project is.
Great, thanks Dawn. Yeah, the Memorial Day was done so nicely that, you know, is, if we can't be together, it's an awfully nice second, second choice. And thank you Seth for all your work on that too. Kim, please inform us, this is very exciting.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you who don't know, I'm Kim Stewart, and I'm currently the Chair of the Veterans Advisory Council for the moment. And I'd just like to take a second to recognize the whole team, because it's not just me. In no particular order, we have Drew Kitten, Ed Kelly, Joe Kelly, Kevin Norton, and Ed Hanifin. We do have an open seat, I believe we have one application, and we're hoping that that seat will be filled soon, because it will help us with filling quorums. As stated, as Dawn already stated, this year is a little bit different. That doesn't mean that we can't reflect on Veterans Day and what it means. Freedom, sacrifice, and honor for those who have served in our military. This year in general, the council has focused on collaboration. And, you know, that includes other nonprofits, residents, town departments. And in that spirit, we're happy to tell you about a couple initiatives that have included all of those people. First of all, I don't know what we would be doing right now without Seth, so a shout out to Seth for his, his, it's unbelievable, that guy's everywhere. So he's helping obviously with the video that Dawn mentioned. And in addition to that, Mrs. Sturgis' class at Havley School will be working with him to include a short video of thanks from her students, which is, I can't wait to see that. Citro Community Christmas once again has marshaled its volunteers to engage the community families, and they've produced some incredibly beautiful handmade cards for veterans, which will be mailed to all 985 veterans in Situate. In addition to that, Community Christmas has funded a small gift to include in each card. We've also partnered with the Food Pantry, as Dawn said. They're offering a salute to service event. It's gonna be an outdoor open house, Dawn mentioned, it's November 13th from 11:00 to 2:00 at their current location at the Masonic Temple. This is a drive-through event. All veterans will receive a large box of, I'm told, all-American food, a small gift, refreshments, and a chance to speak with other veterans. That's all being organized by Marie Murray and her team over there at the, at the Food Pantry. I'm told there'll be a few other surprises too. So all Situate veterans are welcome. If you have any questions about that, the phone number is 781-545-5827. And just as, as a side note, Community Christmas created and funded a nice invitation to this event that's gonna go in all of the veterans' cards. So all 985 veterans will be personally invited to that event at the Food Pantry. So that's kind of where we're at right now. I'd like to do a little plug for the council to like and share our Facebook page, Situate Veterans Advisory Council. And as always, I like to close with a shout out to Lorraine Devon, Michelle Zicchetti. We couldn't do what we do without them, so thank you to both of them. And thank you.
Well, thanks so much for that, Kim. I'm gonna probably call on Mr. Vignani as our liaison to vets to kick up his comments.
Yeah, I, am I muted?
Nope, you're good.
Oh, good. I don't have much to add. That committee is self-sufficient, Kim is a complete go-getter, and I just stay out of the way. So just seeing all the progress that they've made is impressive, and the contact that they've made, and it seems to be a great group, so.
There's more, there's more to come. You know, it's really about collaboration, and working with the Legion has been fantastic, and Dawn, and so stay tuned, everybody, as soon as this COVID's over, watch out.
Thanks, Kim. I mean, the work that you've done in the last year, and, you know, getting this up and ringing, and it's been phenomenal. So thank you for making them all special, and we'll all, we'll all certainly be spending a moment to think and thank, think about and thank our vets in town. Does anyone on the board else like to add? Ms. Curran?
Madam Chair, yes. Kim, thank you so much, and to everybody else that's on the committee, I have one question about the outreach. You're reaching out to 985 folks, which you know all won't be able to drive through. Are there any type of accommodations that are going to take place to enable them to participate a little bit, even if they can't get there in their car?
Oh, wait, Seth, we muted our friend, hold on, there we go. You're unmuted.
Yes, so we have two members of the Situate Police Department liaison, they're both liaisons to the veterans, and they are working on that piece of this, because we anticipated that as a potential issue. So we're gonna wait and see how it goes, but yes, we are, we're aware of that, and we're gonna, we're gonna make accommodations if we need to.
Great.
But thank you.
Didn't doubt that, I just wanted other folks to know too, so thanks, Kim.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments for Dawn or for Kim?
No, but thank you.
Yeah, yay, all right. This is a great meeting. All these people working hard on behalf of the community. And it's 7:40, and we're going on to our 7:45 agenda item. Unless, Kim, are we good with you? Yep, okay, thank you. 7:45, we have a Discuss Vote Energy Conservation, Inc. contract. Is Kevin Kelly doing this, or you Jim, or Nancy? Oh, Kevin's here, I see him. Kevin, can you, are you, oh, you're hiding in non-video land. Would you like to talk to us about the contract? Kevin is unmuted, but I do not, oh, and there he is. Hi Kevin. We don't hear you, I know you're unmuted, but try it again. Can you turn up your volume maybe?
He's right there. I can call him if you need.
We're having technical difficulty with our esteemed facilities director.
I'll give him a call if you want to move on.
Seth, wanna do that, Jim?
I mean, I don't have the details of all the things we got, but this is a continuation of our Green Communities Grant. We received a Green Communities Grant for $198,000 to continue energy efficiencies in town departments. This includes work at the high school, the library, the Wampertuck Elementary School, town hall, and the wastewater treatment plant, various motors and things like that. The work will be done by Energy Conservation, Inc. through our Green Communities project.
All right, and we did get that in our background as well.
Kevin did a great job on that grant with some help from, I think, Kyle Boyd.
Yeah, all right. Kevin's still trying to get in, but this
He's plugging his headphones in right now.
Okay. Let's see.
Is that working?
Oh, perfect, now we can, all right, Jim just gave us the background on the green, green grant, whatever. Now I won't get it right, community grant. Anything you wanted to add about this, Kevin?
No, I, sorry, I was trying to get my microphone to work on my laptop, well, so I didn't hear everything Jim said, but it's for five measures, we received another grant for $198,000. This is a request to have the contract signed with Energy Conservation, Inc., who manages the work for us. They've done a great job for us in the other grants in the past. And this is for five measures. LED lighting at the high school, LED lighting at the library, LED lighting at town hall, a blower motor at the wastewater treatment plant, and a de-stratification fan at Wampertuck.
Okay. Thank you so much for your work on that grant. Does the board have any questions about this? We have discussed this in the past, I know.
He answered my question.
All right, any others, Mr. Goodrich?
What is a de-stratification?
I knew you were gonna ask that.
I just don't know, so I'd like
Picture a, it's a huge ceiling fan. If you, have you ever been into Jordan's furniture? They have those big, huge black fans in the ceiling.
Yeah.
So it's a huge ceiling fan, they, we put them in big areas of going to like the gym or the cafeteria area at Wampertuck. And it helps bring the heat down from the ceiling to mix it with the cooler ground below, and they do work. We have them in other buildings.
Yeah, all right, and I'll tell my kids not to fling anything up that, all right, sounds good.
Yeah, they'll be out of the way.
All right.
Good.
All right, good, thank you.
Any other questions about this? My only question is, new lights at the library, it feels like we just finished building that building, and we need it to upgrade its environmental footprint, is that?
Karen, I'm not sure if you were at the meeting in the library when we did lighting, but we, sadly, we put fluorescent lighting in the library, so we are changing it to LED.
Yeah, I probably blocked that out, okay. Are there any other questions, comments?
I'd love to give a quick shout out to Kyle Boyd in our, because he has been a great help in helping us get the reporting done and so forth for Green Communities. He's had experience with that in his previous life, and it's been a great help getting this done, helping us get the grants, so appreciate that.
Great. Yeah, thank you. It's a ton of work and having that expertise and house.
It is a ton of work.
Yeah. Would somebody like to make a motion about this?
Move to award a contract to Energy Conservation, Inc. in the amount of $198,341 for energy, energy efficiency improvements to multiple municipal facilities.
Motion by Ms. Curran. Second by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will, this will require a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Tony?
Tony?
He's muted. We'll take that.
All right.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Great. Thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you all very much.
You're more than welcome to hang around with us, but we're going to move on to our 7:50 with Kevin Cafferty, our DPW director. There's his little box. Thanks, Kevin. Kevin is here to discuss and vote for us to discuss and vote two DPW contracts. The first is engineering services. Kevin, would you like to start with that? Or are they combined? Oh, we don't hear you.
He's right there.
All right. You are unmuted, but we do not hear you. Nope. Are you plugged in? Wait, I made sounds.
Any better?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Excellent. Okay, so we have two contracts. The first one is to tie and bond, and that's for well 18B. When we did the renovations to the treatment plant, we set up some green sand filters so that we could use the well at 18B. We've known, we've had a manganese problem there and as well an iron problem for the past few years. So we put up the green sand filters, but we weren't approved to dispose of the discharge water that we get from the green sand filters. So this project is to design and permit the disposal of the water, and then we will construct the disposal structure, whatever we have to do to use that water. In the past, we were pumping into tanks, and then we were bringing it over to the sewer treatment plant to dispose of.
Great. Does the board have any questions about that particular continuation project? Nope. And then we've, as you said, we've talked about this for a long time, and this is the next step. And obviously, Time Bond has been very involved in this as well, as well, very familiar with our system. Would someone like to make a motion if there's no discussion?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the contract to tie and bond of Westfield, Massachusetts for $59,200. Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Okay. And the next item is to discuss the owner's project manager for the water treatment plant, new water treatment plant. Mr. Cafferty?
Great, thank you. And Sean Anderson is here. I think I mentioned that. I couldn't tell if the mic was working at the same time. So if he wants to step in on anything, he's more than welcome.
Sean right now. Okay.
The water treatment plant was singled out in the water study as a crucial part of the infrastructure of the town's water system. The town depends on the facility to supply water for residents, especially in the summer. It was built in the 60s, and it's showing its age and should be upgraded. So back in April 2019, $4 million was allocated for a design and engineering of a new treatment facility. This is the first step to meet with the state bidding laws. The first thing that we do is we get known as project manager on site. And then what they do is they start putting together the RFP for the engineering plans of the treatment plant. So we advertised, I believe, in the Central Register. We sent out 28 copies of an RFP. We received five proposals. We had a scoring sheet of what we did. We had multiple people involved in it, in the packet. I believe you guys have that. And what we did decide to go with when we were all said and done was tie and bond. It was close between tie and bond and environmental partners. And we felt the best proposal was from tie and bond.
Okay. And we have our water superintendent on the Zoom as well. Sean, do you want to add any? That's Sean Anderson. Do you like to add anything?
I'm sure. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Excellent. No, just that, as Kevin said, there are really three, three components that set tie and bond, I think, ahead of everybody else. One was that they wanted to hit the ground running by starting some pilot testing this winter, which could save us six months' time. The second one was they brought into their firm Stephen Rafferty, who retired after 30 years with CDM, Camp Dresser &amp; McGee and Other Engineering Firm, and who recently was the OPM for the Falmouth, the new Falmouth Water Treatment Plant, Surface Water Treatment Plant. And we had the opportunity to tour that plant. It was fantastic. So that was really good. And the third one is that they're a really good-sized engineering firm. And because of that, they have the ability to do everything in-house. They don't have to outsource things. So I don't see, you know, the potential for any delays because of that.
Great. Does the board have any questions about this stuff?
Just one, Karen. I don't see, does anyone have in the packet the rating?
No.
I don't see that.
I don't have the backup, no.
Kevin, do you know the pricing similar?
No, we don't go by pricing on this. It's a, it's just like doing a building, like the high school, or, you know, we negotiate the price afterwards with them on how that's set up.
So is it a percentage of the total project? Is that how?
No, it's a, it's a cost. We tell them the services that we're looking for and what we're expecting them to accomplish through the RFP process, and they price it up accordingly. Really? That wasn't in the packet? I had a comparison of costs that we put in for the high school and for.
Yeah, normally I get that, but it seems to be.
Maybe at the bottom.
I didn't see it, Tony, in the whole package.
No.
I apologize about that.
So would, do you make the assumption that they're all going to change the same, charge the same rate per service? Is that, is it typically?
Well, the way it's designed, it's, it's set up so that you just don't go, you don't have to go with the lowest bidder. It's not like we just went out to bid on a project for an engineering service and pick the lowest bidder because you want to get the most advantageous proposal you can, especially in the owner's project manager part. You know, it really goes a long way to selecting your designer as well as the construction project in helping out with pilot studies. We could have lowered the cost with them by negotiating to remove some of the pilot studies out of it, or, or different aspects of it. But we negotiated as an engineering service. It wasn't just dollars and cents, if that makes sense.
So you don't have a cost. Sorry, Tony, go ahead.
So this is different than the typical bidding process that we run into. And is it just because it's a, the engineering, type of engineering service that it is?
It's an engineering selection process. One of the sheets that I thought I included, and it's my, my bad for not having it, is we rated each individual firm by a point selection over five different categories that we brought up through the RFP. And each company received a maximum of five points for that. So it was scored by myself, Sean Anderson, Sean McCarthy, Mark Cloud, and we had somebody else also. I think we had five of them. And that's what the scoring selection was. Then whoever has the most advantageous, determine the most advantageous firm, then we go forward and we work on negotiating a price with them and how it comes out. And that avoids just going, if somebody came in and said they could be the OPM for $60,000, and somebody else said it was $500,000. You know, the money spent now, especially in a project like this, is well-spent because you, you have a better shot at getting what you're looking for. And we were impressed when we met with Time Bond. Mr. Rafferty, who now works with Time Bond, is really, really knowledgeable about this. And Sean and Mark were very, you know, very impressed with that and excited to potentially work with them.
They're a good firm. We've worked a lot with them, so.
Kevin, do you have, do you have that sheet? What was the range of points? And, you know, you had five firms. Did somebody get 20 and somebody get 100, or were they?
We were, we were neck and neck. We had a tie between environmental partners and tie and bond. We spoke about it as a group when we rated everything and opened, you know, went through everything. And Time Bond edged environmental partners out because of their knowledge of our system. You know, they've been working a lot on our system. And also, Sean and Mark were really liked, you know, Mr. Rafferty, as we had said.
Okay. Further questions from the board? Mr. Goodrich?
I guess I'm just curious. Has Time Bond, have they finished up their, I'd love to hear that they're trying to get rolling as soon as possible. I think that's fantastic. Have they finished the water study, the final phase for that? I just know that was delayed. I just, I don't, I don't want that to be a precedent if the final report is delayed, if that's going to be, now this other project would be delayed. I don't want it to be a pattern.
Yeah. Sean, you want to take that, the water study?
Yep. We just, we had a Zoom meeting just recently, Kevin and I, with Time Bond, where they went over some of their responses to some questions that the town had for them. And we reviewed all of those. We asked them, and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but we asked them to put that as part of their final product and bring that forth to us.
Was that supposed to be done by now, or is this, was it delayed, or?
Yeah, we plan to have it done sooner. We were delayed with, you know, some of the COVID stuff going on and everything else. Our biggest question is, what's going to be the best way to present it to the public? We can't have an open meeting right now. Do we do a Zoom call with a ton of people on it? Do we, you know, we were talking about maybe meeting with the planning board separately one night and let them go over with the planning board. And we're just kind of trying to figure out the best way to bring it out to people, to be honest with you. And we're open to suggestions, but they're ready to go on it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, we'll need to nail that down. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on this matter?
Move that the Board of Selectmen award the owner's project manager contract to tie and bond of Westfield, Massachusetts for $274,000.
Motion by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussions? Seeing none, we need to do roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
All right. The motion passes 5-0, and I look forward to that work starting, too. Great.
Someone has a hand raised, Karen?
Oh, there is a hand raised. Thank you, Mr. Vignani. I'm glad you're paying attention. Ms. Burke, would you please give your name and address? And do you have a question about the water treatment OPM?
Yeah, sorry. It's me. Hi. Stephanie Burke, 93 Marion Road, Situate, Massachusetts. Do you have, sorry, I have the news on in the background. I just wanted to ask a question about the experiences and the, and the other town history that towns that this engineer has worked with in the past, and if you have that information, and if that would be made public, of treatments that he's worked on, or this engineer has, company has worked on in the last 10 years, and, and the contracts involved in that and the process, just basically experience as far as other towns in Massachusetts.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let our DPW people get the meat of this. But yeah, if they've been, if you, I mean, the short answer is if you go to their website, it's very thorough, and they have a lot of that background information. But you guys, I mean, you've worked with them for years. Do you want to address that question?
I'll start, and Sean can take over. We did. We looked at all the characteristics of where they've worked and what they've done in the past. And, you know, that's why we like Time Bond a little better. As we said, Mr. Rafferty had just designed our work and built a state-of-the-art system in Falmouth, which was a DAF system. And we actually went out and toured a bunch of plants. We actually dragged Jim down on a couple of the tours just to see what he was getting into, and went through the different variables. And we talked to the people who run those new plants now and said what they like, what they dislike, who did what, and how things were designed. This is the owner's project manager. It's not necessarily the design firm that's going to design the final. It's the engineering firm that's looking at what we need as a town of Situate, and what we want to get, and what we're looking for. So they'll do some pilot studies. And the pilot studies are to accommodate the DEP and say a DAF system might be the best system, which is a diffused air system. They might come up with a different means of treatment. And then they would go to the engineering firm. And when you get the engineering firm, it's kind of like going to a doctor. You go to a general practitioner, and he reviews you, sees how you're doing, and then picks a heart specialist to work on your heart if you needed something to that effect. So we're doing the same with the engineering firm. With Time Bond, they know our system really well. And they've got some experience of people who have recently built one treatment plant. And we also toured Waymouth, we toured Falmouth. Sean can say, we taught a bunch of them just to see what we liked. And that's how we came up with it. It wasn't just picking the names out of the hat. And we're going with the Mass State Building Code. And I did find, by the way, the rating system, it was on the very last page of the packet, and it says how we came up with it. It was in there. And it gets into the scoring, so, sorry.
Well, thank you for that. I totally missed it, too. Seth, the answer question? Okay, great. Let me see if anyone else has raised their hand on this matter, because I wasn't paying attention. I don't see any other questions. I believe we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, then we will do a roll call vote.
I believe we already did that, Madam Chair.
Did we do, on this matter? I thought, oh, we did. Okay.
We did it, and then we realized we had a question from Ms. Burke.
Does anyone want to reconsider the vote based on the question? Okay. Great. Then thank you. We will release you. As much as you, you're welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting, or you can start texting us what you hear on the news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. This is.
Thank you.
Exciting. We are going to move on to our 8 o'clock interviews of the board and committees tonight. In deference to, we were, we do have a lot of board and committee interviews to conduct. We postponed them because of the importance of other things going on in the world tonight. But we didn't want to postpone the four remaining applicants for the Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice. To remind folks, we, we, we have a standalone meeting to interview, and I've forgotten, I think it was 13 or 14 other applicants. And what we did with that, if you guys haven't had a chance to, the applicants haven't had a chance to see it, in order to expedite the questions and also to just be, make sure that we heard, you know, the same sort of input from each applicant, we asked four questions of everyone, the same question, and then just asked, opened it up to see if the board had additional questions. And the four questions, I'll just, I think everyone is, is every applicant here now? We have Maggie, Louis, Natasha, and Angela.
I need Louis.
Louis, are you?
And it changes name.
We don't see, if you can raise your hands, who, maybe your name's wrong on the, on the list. We can try to, Seth will keep looking for you. And I will just run through the four questions. Hopefully, he's hearing this. The first question will be, the charge specifies working to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against all people in our community. Why do you think this would work, and is it important? The second question is, what experience or skills do you bring to the committee that will help meet the goals of the charge? And I'll remind anyone listening that the board does have the written applications and resumes as appropriate for the applicants. So we do have a lot more information that we've all been able to review. The third question is, the charge recommends members, which members may be useful to the committee? Do you think the proposed composition is appropriate to meet the goals? And the fourth question And the fourth question is what information do you think the committee will need to gather to complete the work? And how would you approach obtaining that information? You don't need to remember all that. We'll ask you again when it's your turn. But that is how we'll proceed unless somebody would like to revise that and on the board would like to revise that. But that is how we address the other members. So, and in the order that I, in no particular order, except that this is the list that we have. We'll start with Maggie, who is there. I know, sorry, it's just the luck of the draw. Maggie Wallen Olsen is our first applicant. So you are unmuted. If you would just give your name and address for the board and we'll remind you of the questions.
Maggie Wallen Olsen, 151 Mannlot Road.
Great. Thank you for applying for this important role. So the first question was that the charge requires, specifies working to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice and violence against all people in our community. Why do you think this work is important?
I think it's important because it makes it desirable community for our residents and it makes it safe for all our residents and people who visit us.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I think this is, it makes it a safer community when everybody is, feels like they are treated well with dignity and respect. And that basically that's it.
Okay. And what experience or skills do you think that you would bring to the committee that would help meet those goals?
I didn't give a resume, but I gave, because I, 40 plus years of nursing as a superintendent and director and administrator and stuff. But all my nursing has been with Catholic hospitals and their service to the poor, marginalized people. So I've had a lot of work. And have been in the Catholic social teaching of respect for individuals, dignity of every individual, treat everyone fairly has been ingrained in me from the time I started working as a professional nurse. So I have had a lot of experience working, being with, serving poor people in many, many different circumstances in California and in rural Missouri. And I've also had a lot of experience as an advocate for justice in advocating for a living wage for janitors and end to the death penalty, adolescent pregnancy prevention, early detection of disease and appropriate education for kids with disabilities. Those have been the, my advocacy work, mostly in California. Currently, my involvement includes standing with Black Lives Matter and justice for immigrants and working with the immigrants through IINE out of Boston. And dealing with food insecurity for our residents right here as working a couple of days a week with a Situate food pantry. And I know circumstances that people are under and that we are experiencing two to four new clients and families every week. So and you know, and it has to do with, do you give them what we got or do you go out and ask them, we don't have what you asked for, but we have this. Is that okay? That kind of an attitude where I know that doesn't always exist in other food pantries that I've visited. So anyway, it was important that we do that kind of a thing. And oh, the other thing is that my experience is working with the homeless. Before COVID, I was a translator for immigrant families in the homeless shelter for families in Marshfield. They were more Puerto Ricans, Haitians, some of them from Central America, working with them to help them navigate their way to get back into a house or figure out what they're going to do. It's, I just feel, I feel my heart. It's very, very important work and support. It's important for myself, for my, for my, you know, it fulfills my faith. But also makes, it's a better community when people care about other people. You know, to say enough that you care to work for them and see that they have a fair shake.
Great. Sorry, I didn't, sorry, I didn't cut you up as I was, we've said all along.
That's okay.
We have so many remarkable people coming forward for this. It's a delight to meet you all. The next question we had is that the charge recommends members which might be useful to this work in this committee. And we proposed a composition. Do you think that that's appropriate to meet the goals if you had a chance to look at the charge?
I have not. I neglected to do that. I apologize.
Okay, then we'll skip over that.
I would think, based on the school incidents, I would think somebody from the school, superintendent or somebody important in the school system. Because it was that racial incident that affected my grandson directly and his buddy who was a Medco student that really prompted me to look at this as something I might want to be involved in.
Okay. The last formal question is what, how, what information do you think the committee needs to gather to do the work? And how do you think you should go about getting that information?
I think I'm not sure how you would go about gathering it, but I think we need to understand to figure out what people know and understand about white privilege and about talking about race. And you can do this in small groups if you have a good moderator where people feel safe speaking up. But I think we need to understand where the sense of mentality and mental sense and the ideas are of the people here now. I've never lived in a place that is so white. So I'm just used to having people of color around me all the time in California. So that's where I think we would start with like small group meetings about race and about white privilege to people to see if they understand even the concepts.
Right. I will open it to the board for follow-up questions. We have the Vignani question, which is now known as, you mentioned that you're from California. How long, what's your connection with Situate? How long have you lived here and?
Grandkids. My daughter-in-law, my daughter-in-law lives a block away, two grand, two of my nine grandkids live here. And she has, she and her family have been many generations here. So, and my son met her and when they decided to get married, she says, I'm not leaving here. So in California, you know, and so, and that was fine. That was fine.
Great. Okay. Does the board members have any additional questions? Mr. Goodrich?
So I'll, first of all, just to thank you for coming forward and it's maybe difficult in some forms, but it's wonderful to hear. You can tell how much, how passionate you are on the subject. So just thank you for your perspective. With your nursing background and this is, maybe this will become the Goodrich question. What are kind of your thoughts on, I'm always very concerned with public health and racial inequities. It's, it's something that we can you can, the results you can see pretty quickly. So as working in what are your thoughts? What have you seen around the, you've been around the country? What are your thoughts on public health and racial inequity?
My thoughts on public health? I was in a clinic in Missouri that would include everybody except those who could not give us a social security number. And the women's clinic would accept everybody. I mean, except only if you could give a social security number, but the STD clinic would include anybody because they knew that that was it involved the population as a whole. And people don't have health insurance that the Affordable Care Act needs to be fixed. It needs to be enlarged so that people can, who are above the poverty line and they're working poor. They still don't have enough money. A lot of them still don't have enough money to afford decent insurance. And they go without medicine. They go without treatments. They stumble along and it's, it's a country with the resources that we have. I think it's shameful. That was my work in public health and visiting people at home. So I know there's, I have I have seen the inequities. I have been with the inequities and I know that there's ways to fix it. But we have to have the will to do it and put the resources there.
Thank you.
Other questions for Ms. Olsen? Wallen Olsen? No? Great. Thank you. We do. As I said, we have a lot of really good candidates and I said at the end, so we're going to not try to vote tonight because we're going to need to really think about the composition with all the strengths that people are bringing to the table. So you're welcome to stay with us for the rest of the evening, but we'll go on. Did we find, did we find Louis? And thank you so much.
I apologize. I cannot find him.
We can't, oh, we had one person. Okay. If Louis, if you are here, it's not a seance. If you go to participants and raise hands, maybe we'll find you. If not, well, we'll track you down tomorrow and just see what happened. Our next person, wait a minute.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Maggie.
Advisory Committee.
Appreciate it. All right. I see the administrator. I'm going to guess that's Mr., and now I'm going to say it wrong. Chimini? Oh, you're muted. Hold on. Hold on. Okay, it says you're unmuted.
I am not the administrator, but I will pose like one if I have to.
Well, good. Well, I'm glad we found you. If you could just give your name and address for the minutes, that would be great.
Sure. My name is Louis Simeni and I live at 92 Marion Road, Situate.
All right. Did you hear any of the questions in wherever you were living? Okay, good. All right. Then we'll, we'll launch and as I said, we have your background information. Thank you for volunteering for this committee. The first question we have is the charge of the committee specifies working to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice and violence against all people in our community. Why do you think this work is important?
Well, that work and that mission is important as a foundation of any community, certainly any community that wants to progress. I've been a neighbor of Situate for 22 years. I've seen how Situate has grown. I think this is a very good time and it's growth and transformation to move up into that more enlightened environment. It's a good time. The census has just taken place. So you can, you can have some measurements. You can find some statistics that you can help to measure against. And with the election and everything else that's going on, this is probably a time of peak awareness of these issues.
That's great. And what do you think you can bring for skills and experience that would help the committee meet their goals?
Well, I'm a recently retired executive of human resources. I was the head of human resources for Samsonite, headquartered in Mansfield, Massachusetts. So I know how to bring projects through the various obstacles and various elements that can be challenging to get things done. I think my greatest skills are making sure that whatever we are striving to do makes sense and that we're capable of doing. I've also worked on the ground. I, my background in the homeless. I worked with the Dorothy Day Center in Danbury, Connecticut for several years. I worked with the Boston Veterans Shelter, getting them job skills. And I also ran the Katrina evacuees housing project when they were up in Boston, when they were down on the Cape.
Wow. And you said you were, you were, well, I'll get to those questions in a minute. We did talk about the charge is, have you had a chance to look at the charge? And the committee members and what do you think of the composition that's proposed?
When you say the charge, what do you mean by the charge?
So when we formed the committee, the Board of Selectmen came up with what we thought the goals of the committee would be, and that's what we call the charge. And in it, we suggested that we should include, you know, the Situate Human Resources, PD at large and some other members. And we've had a lot of conversation about whether or not that's the right mix. And we didn't know who was going to apply, so that was another piece of it. So do you have any comments on that composition as proposed?
I'm intrigued by it. It's certainly comprehensive. So that's, that's a good start. Do you have a model or do you have, have you investigated or uncovered any cities that are doing it in the way that you'd like to do it?
Mara, do you want to try fielding how we?
Yeah, I can try. Yeah, not, to be honest with you, not really. I mean, I think what was important to the board to get this off the ground was to identify first, to bring together a group of qualified citizens that can help us take a look at our policies, our procedures, our hiring practices, our training. It's really to look at the governmental processes to make sure that they are you know, diverse and inclusive and equitable. And then our goal is to, once we bring the group together, to talk about how best to go forward. And we can, you know, go out and research and see how other towns are doing it today, which certainly would be open to that, but make sure that we, you know, apply it appropriately here in Situate. So long answer to a short question. Hope it helped.
Well, with a group that you have, I think that's a very good start to understand where the community stands in the various statistical categories on income, access to healthcare and so forth. So we can get that information quickly. What is going to be, I think, more difficult and this is where I wonder if there are other community groups that could also participate is just a general philosophy of the town. Is it a philosophy where someone is needing, needs something, people reach out? How resistant are people going to be for change? If this requires, if we come to the conclusion that in the town administration, that we should have far more minority representation, how much resistance are we going to run into and how are we going to prepare for that? So I think we may adjust down the road a little bit, but that's a good starting point.
Thank you. And you touched a little bit about this, but I'll just give you the formal question, which is what information do you think the committee needs to complete their work and how would you obtain, how would you approach obtaining that information? So you've already touched on some of it, but would you like to add some more?
Well, I am new to the town. I will be here for the rest of my time, but there's apparently some history that we, I think we need to get a common understanding of. I think that would be a starting point.
Okay, great. I will turn it to the board to see if there are additional questions you'd like to ask. Ms. Curran? Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Simeni, is it Simeni or Simeni?
It's Simeni in this country.
It's a meaning. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I pronounced it properly. With all of your wonderful human resource experience, I think you'd be a great asset. Can you share with us at all any type of diversity initiatives that you implemented at Samsonite?
Both Samsonite and other companies I worked at, there was always a big emphasis on bringing minorities through the organization, getting them to positions where they could contribute to the organization and the organization would support them in overcoming obstacles. Both internship programs, mentoring programs and so forth. We were constantly doing programs like that. The most effective programs we did though, we were actually a little bit more aggressive where we would go to schools and identify students that matched our skill set and our type of work and so forth. That we would basically recruit them to join our internship programs and so forth. So we were being aggressive in finding people and bringing them into the organization. Now, having said that, and this may be something the town wants to pursue. You have to make sure that it's, it's a, it's a goal that everyone supports or else you could create some difficulty in the organization.
No, thank you. I think you, I think you'd offer some good procedural and process experience, if you will. Sounds like it. Mr. Vignani?
Yeah, just two quick questions. How long have you actually been in Situate? And oh, you can answer that. The other one's not really related to that.
Six weeks.
Six weeks?
I just sold my house in Norwell. I'm building a condo in here in Situate and I'm at the seawall right now renting while my condo's being built.
Good. Can you tell me what was your, what's your personal moment that made this be such an important cause for you?
I was called the evening that the the evening that the evacuees from Katrina were arriving at Otis. And I'm, you know, I'm executive and management specialist. And I was consulting at the time. And they said, "We're having these problems on the Cape. We're getting all these evacuees. And the housing corporation, which takes care of the homeless on the Cape, is gonna run the housing on the base. Can you go down and help them?" And I walked into the room. It was about 10 o'clock in the morning. And they had all the rules up on the wall that they were gonna have for the evacuees and all these pieces of protocol or procedure. And I asked, "Who's gonna enforce this? Who's gonna run this? How is it gonna be translated to the people who are here?" And they said, "Well, we just, after six hours of debate, decided what we're gonna call the people who are here." And I said, "What's that?" And they said, "We're gonna call them our guests." And I said, "Okay, now look on the wall. Would any guest feel welcome looking at these rules?" And that helped me understand at the basic level that whatever we are proposing to do for the people in the town currently or the people we hope to attract, that it's not about what we're doing. It's also about what they're experiencing and feeling. And we will not be successful unless we look through their eyes on how all this plays out.
Great, thank you.
Great. That's very well put. Is, are there any other questions from our board? No. So I wish we had hours with everyone because you all have so much to add to this process. But we will conclude with you. And we have two other applicants that we'd like to get to tonight. So thank you again for, welcome to Situate first. And thank you for jumping in to help work with our, to improve our community. We appreciate it. The next on my list is Natasha Stewart, who's in the box over here. I think you, we have to unmute you. All right, let's see. Hold on a sec. Okay. Hi, Natasha. If you would just give your name and street address for the record.
I'm Natasha Stewart. I live at 102 Branch Street.
Great, thanks. All right. So now you should be all ready to go because you've heard it twice now. First question is, the charge specifies working to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against the people in our community. Why do you think this work is important?
So, I mean, just to start, I am the priest in charge at St. Luke's Episcopal Church here in town. So as a priest, as an Episcopal priest, I feel that this work is what helps us build God's kingdom. It helps us build unity. It builds a stronger community. And it gives us a strong foundation to build a more peaceful and equal place for everyone.
Yeah, you guys have been really at the forefront of a lot of these vigils and things like that. So thank you for that. And so, other than the obvious, what other skills and experience do you think would help with this committee and this charge?
Yes, I mean, the obvious as a priest. And of course, I've done lots of mission work. I've done lots of work with underserved communities, from food pantries to Katrina work, going down and leading mission trips there, mission trips to Honduras and other places, third world countries. So I bring all of that to the table, the ability to organize and plan, and the passion that this sort of work is really important. Growing up, I lived in a lot of different communities, always very multicultural and socially and economically diverse. Sometimes we lived in very poor places in our city, St. Louis. And sometimes we were very lucky and we lived in really nice places, similar to Situate, but not Situate. And so I bring sort of that background of having all these sorts of experiences growing up. I also, because this is not just about racism and that sort of stuff, but I know that special needs and disabilities were also brought into this. So I have a special needs son, who is, he'll be seven on Sunday. So I've spent a lot of time learning about that world and advocating for him in lots of ways, as well as others. So, and then, of course, St. Luke's is doing lots of racial learning right now. We've participated in, the most obvious thing is all the signs you see out front of our church, right? Racism's pandemic, Martin Luther King, Level Heel, Hate Won't, all of those sorts of things. And then we also have done The Traces of the Trade, which is a film and discussion about slavery in New England, which was very educational. And we opened that up to everyone in Situate to join. And we had quite a few members from the town come and join us for that discussion. We have partnered with Stride and done the Waking Up White reading and discussion. And we're gonna do some follow-up discussion at the church to go dig deeper. And we're continuing to look at ways that we can do more education around particularly racism because that sort of is in the forefront of everyone's mind right now as a way to bring this forward.
Great. And we've talked a little bit about the composition of the committee. If you had a chance to look at that, do you think that it's set up to be appropriate to meet our goals?
Yeah, I think it's a good, it's a good place. I mean, you could have a committee with like everyone in town on it because, I mean, like you guys have seen, you have so many good candidates that have come forward. Everyone has good intentions. But you have to have a committee of the people that are kind of the stakeholders and who have the most expertise. And I think this is probably the best way to do that. And if we need other expertise going forward, that's a great opportunity to ask someone to come and help with a special project or something like that. So I think it's a good place to start. And we can build and pull people in as you need to.
Yeah, that's a really good point you've made that, you know, we've talked about in other meetings is that we, you know, whoever we put on this board, we would expect that if they said, "Hey, you know, it would be really great if we, you know, pulled in somebody to think about this group," that, you know, you would be empowered to do, to look for resources, which is probably leading into the last question on the formal part, which is, what information do you think that this committee needs to gather to do the work? And how do you think it's best approached to get that information?
I mean, I think in the charge, you know, you talk about looking at the policies and the procedures of the different government things. I think that's a really great place to start, some of the concrete work of what are we doing? And maybe where are the places we can improve or do better? I think also, right now, really looking at the issues of poverty that are gonna start to arise more as COVID and lockdowns continue will be a good thing for us to really look at the use of our food pantry in town and how that's on the rise and other telltale signs that people are struggling in those ways. I'm a big advocate for storytelling. There's a lot of history here in Situate. And I think a great way to get the community involved in this project and to help them move forward and be invested in the work of all kinds of reconciliations and healing and being open to change is to help them come and tell the stories of what has happened. I've been in Situate for not quite two years now as the priest here. And I've heard so much in the time I've been here. And I know there's so much more to tell. And so I think that would be a really good place, along with the looking at the policies and all of that, to help get everybody involved and maybe find where the places are that we need to do the most work or the best work.
Great. Thank you so much. I'll open it up to the board. Do you have follow-up questions you'd like to ask? Is it Reverend? What's the, I wanna get the right honorific. No further questions? I guess you were very thorough. That's the benefit of going third, I guess.
Yeah. Got to listen to everybody else.
Well, we very much appreciate you coming and talking to us and volunteering to serve on this. So we'll be voting tonight, as I mentioned. But we will, we're gonna have some, we're gonna have some work to do to put together the right group. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. Our last and absolutely not least is Angela Ribero-Drey, who I've had the pleasure of meeting through this process. So Angela, if you would just give your name and address, and we'll run through the questions with you.
Okay. Angela Ribero-Drey, 74, Seaview.
Great. As you know, the charge specifies that we're working to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice, and violence against all people in our community. Why do you think this work is important?
Well, obviously, as a minority person, the work is very important. I think it's a work that's been going on for generations and generations. Although there's been a lot of progress made in this beautiful country, there's still a lot of work to be done. So I want to commend the Board of Selectmen for taking on this, you know, desire to form the committee. I think it would benefit not only those of us of color in the community, but the community as a whole.
Great. And what experiences and skills do you bring specifically to the committee that would help meet those goals?
Well, professionally, I work for a large global company that's very diverse. And I am the liaison between our corporate clients and our operational departments. So I work very closely with our legal, our compliance, our audit, our statement, managing all the services that we provide the clients. So that aspect, that skill set, I think, would be useful in the charge where we're reviewing policies and procedures that the town currently has. So obviously, that would be a useful skill set. My life experience, I've lived in Situate for 50 years, immigrated here with my family from Cape Verde. I won't claim to speak for all the Cape Verdeans in this beautiful town. But I think my background and my voice would serve the committee well.
Great. Thank you so much for stepping up. It's, we all know how important and how deep our history is with the Cape Verdean community. So it's great to see you come forward. The next question is, we've talked about the composition of the committee, what's been proposed in the charge? And do you think that's appropriate for us to meet the goals of the committee?
I think so. I think you have a good representation. I would, in my opinion, you would want more members at large than necessarily town employees. I think town employees would be a good resource for the committee to, you know, to utilize when they need specific, you know, explanations of things. I would, I would think the committee would be more of a 70/30 split from, you know, members at large to town employees. But there's always, if there's a need to, you know, pull in someone else as the committee does their, you know, their work, I think there's flexibility there.
Well, you touched a little bit on the last question, which is, how, what kind of information do you think the committee needs to gather? And how would you approach that work? So you alluded a little bit to that, but would you like to explain?
Yeah, absolutely. You'd look at, you know, the current, current and past practices of the town from, you know, contracts. I know, you know, earlier in the meeting, there were some contracts that were approved, hiring practices. I think that's an important part of the, what I'll call the analysis or the charge of the committee. But also, I think it's important to reach out to the community and hear from the residents what's important to them, what they feel the town is doing wonderfully at or what the town could improve on. I know I've experienced racism in this town, mostly, you know, there's a lot of unconscious bias. There's a lot of microaggression that exists. And I think one of the individuals that spoke earlier talked about, you know, having small groups with people in the community to understand. Because I know there's some very good people in this town that may say something and not even realize how offensive it could be. So I think education and community outreach and, you know, working with the community would be beneficial to everyone.
Great. Thank you so much. I'd like to open up to the board. Are there follow-up questions that you'd like to ask? Looking at the little squares?
Just one question, Karen. Are you involved in any of the groups in town?
Yes, I actually joined. I was invited to participate in a couple of groups that formed in the town. I'm not usually one to join a lot of groups. I'm kind of a private person. But the timing was right. And I had a lot of people say, "Why not you?" You know? I've had my children say, "Mom, you can talk to anyone. You give a lot of everyone. People listen to you." You don't, yeah. So I started to reach, you know, meet some of these wonderful people that I've met. It started with the young folks, young adults in the Black Lives Matter group. They invited me to one meeting down the harbor. I met the folks from Concerned Citizens. And now I'm a member of the Situate United for Action. I've been in Situate, like I said, for so many years. I am impressed of all the candidates that have applied for this position. It makes me feel wonderful as a minority person to see these people, you know, many of color, but a lot are not. And that's okay. I married a nice white Irish man. So, you know, I am, you know, my family is very, very diverse. My grandparents, when they passed away, they had 18 grandchildren. And my mother would say that she had basically the United Nations because not only did she have Irish grandchildren, she had Indian grandchildren. She had Mexican grandchildren. She had Hispanic grandchildren, as well as her Cape Verdean grandchildren. So I come from a very diverse, multi-ethnic family. And I love this community. I'm not going anywhere. So anything that I could do to help the committee make Situate even a better and more welcoming place, I'm happy to help.
And just one last question. Can I ask how old your kids are? Are they in the school system? I don't need the exact age, but are they in the school system?
I went through Situate Public Schools, my two children dead. And now I have a grandson, Lieutenant Gates.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope, just thank you.
Yeah. Angela, I think you were the perfect person to wrap up these interviews because you touched on something that I just wanna note that, you know, I think putting this committee out there, we all, you know, as the board, we talked about it, recognized the need, you know, thought that it needed to happen. But you never know how it's gonna be received. And the fact that so many diverse, thoughtful, compassionate people[1658.50] And the fact that so many diverse, thoughtful, compassionate people have raised their hand makes me feel very proud of our community and optimistic that we'll be able to make some improvements as we go through this. So thank you for articulating that. And that concludes the interviews for this evening for Advisory Committee for Equity and Justice for All. And we will, we will all have to sift through our notes. I know I have pages because I didn't want to, you know, confuse everything that people said. And we will, I would presume at our very next meeting, which is in two weeks, be able to vote and, and start, and be able to get everybody to start working. So I will note one thing I did mention at the last meeting because obviously not everyone is going to be put on this committee. There will, I think, it looks obvious that there will be opportunities to do subcommittee work. But as Mr. Vignani said, there are all these other groups that have been formed in the town to do the community work that also needs to be done. We're going to be looking internally at governance and how we can do better as, as a governing body and as a business in the town. But there's still a lot of other work to be done. So if for some reason you don't get impaneled on this committee, please reach out to those groups because I can't think of anybody that's applied that wouldn't be an asset to the, to the work that needs to be done. So if no one else has any comments on this subject, we will thank you once again for coming forward and move on with our agenda so we can go find out what's happening in the great wide world. All right. Thanks, everybody. It, our 8:40, we're doing okay here, guys. Our discuss and vote of the ratification of restaurant revised extension of premises for TK O'Malley's, and Mr. Bedrow will be outlining that, which we did get the backup in our packet.
Yeah, just to remind people that the board voted to let me approve outside premises, then I'll come back to the board for final approval. TK's, as you remember, extended their dining down that long finger pier out over the water. They have taken those seats off. They've asked for permission to be out front on, with a sidewalk kind of in dense, outside their outside patio. I've given them their permission. It does not block the sidewalk. There's still plenty of room to go by, and the board needs to ratify that.
Great. Has everyone had a chance to look at the plans or have any questions about this? Seeing no questions?
No, that's good.
Okay.
What's good?
Motion? Motion, please.
Move that the board ratify the temporary licenses issued by the town administrator to TK O'Malley's to serve liquor under a temporary extension of premises and outdoor seating license in accordance with COVID-19 Order 35 and consistent with the process of approving such requests established by the Board of Selectmen.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Well moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. Any further discussion? I will ask if anybody is waiting to comment on this because it does affect all of us. Raise your hand, and we will unmute you. I see no public questions. We have a motion and a second. So can we move to a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Cantfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. The next item is to discuss vote extension of premises, deadline change per governor's order blanket approval, Mr. Bedrow.
Along the same lines, the governor had originally approved a change of premises that allows a Board of Selectmen to do the outside seating without having to go through the public hearing process. That original order expired on November 1st. He has extended that now from, from November 1st to any period up to 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. So right now, technically, the board needs to extend their approval because your approval also ended on November 1st.
Great. Does the board have any questions about this? This is a technicality because we're going to be in this for a while. All right, we have a motion.
Move to extend the premise deadline change per the governor's order blanket approval as discussed by the town administrator.
Close enough for Ms. Conley. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Vignani. Well, everybody's seconded, but Mr. Vignani got credit. Any further discussions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cantfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, great. Now we will move on to all business, which is to discuss vote assigned warrant articles for November 16th special town meeting. Mr. Bedrow outlined that we are, as of right now, planning to have town meeting indoors at the high school on the 16th. And we have, what are we up to now? Sports, 15 articles? If that's correct?
I could postpone the...
Yeah, because bylaw?
Yep.
Number 13 is going to be postponed, so that leaves 15 articles, some of which will adoubly be put into consent agenda, which would be bulking together sort of the routine matters so that we can have one vote on those unless somebody feels desperate to discuss unpaid bills. We have discussed and voted on, on our positions on these articles. Does the board feel, well, before we do that, I know that there's been some update on Article 3. And I would ask our school liaison, Mr. Vignani, if you wouldn't, you wanted to make some comments about that and just update the board.
Sure, just a, a quick update. Mr. Goodrich and myself met with some school committee members and the town administrator and the school superintendent and the business director for the school this morning and just went over some questions we had in terms of the funding, what they needed for, and some just general topics about their whole budget. They were very, very good, provided a lot of information. I think cleared up a few questions for us. And, you know, it's kind of a moving target. We're all trying to figure out where all this is going to land in the end. And I think, I think Mr. Goodrich and I both believe that they, you know, that this is, this is a one-time event, that we feel that they answered all of our questions in terms of whether those funds are needed and how they're going to be spent and, and then possibly repay or, you know, repay through the stabilization fund. So I don't know if anyone has any specific questions on it. Andrew, I don't want to speak for you as well, but I think it was an informative discussion, which elaborated on a bigger discussion of the budgets process for both sides and, you know, just continued communication moving forward.
Mr. Goodrich, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, no, I, I think it was good to, to have that conversation. And, you know, we talked about how the, you know, the funding, it's a one-time. We're just making sure that this funding is going, you know, as it says, towards the kindergarten. And so I, I feel comfortable moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for that update. I, I do see a hand raised, but we will get to the public comments after the board has had a, a robust conversation about this whole topic. So, Ms. Conley?
Yeah, I just need clarification. It's listed in the warrant as hybrid kindergarten. Is it truly hybrid or is it that the children in kindergarten are going on a half-day program? They don't send the kindergarten children home with work to do remotely, do they?
Andrew, I'll let you.
Yeah, I mean, it's, gosh, I mean, my, I'm right in between an ECC and a first grader. And even the ECC has some things remotely that are done.
Is it still hybrid because they're not going to school five days a week?
No.
I believe they go two on, one day off.
But, but Jim, but, but Jim, I don't, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but the point is they're going half-day. And to call it hybrid is to suggest that a hybrid model, in my mind at least, has a, an in-person teaching component and a remote learning component. And my question is, are the kindergartners being sent home, expecting to do more work at home? Or are they, as in years past, kindergartners went home and then they went out to play? So as I'm saying, I think this is not strictly a hybrid program. And to describe it as such, I, I think it's not correct, but...
I mean, the entire school model is considered a hybrid model at this point. This town has three choices for education. Fully remote, hybrid, or fully in-person. The schools are in a hybrid model. That is what they're in.
Well, they, but again, not to be argumentative, but I think the schools could have chosen to do hybrid only for high school kids. Like I said, I just think to call this a hybrid kindergarten program is not correct. Unless they're sending these kids home and expecting them to sit down at a computer and do work.
Well, I, I mean, I'll just say, getting my first grader to sit down and do Zoom, there's a lot of bribery going on.
I, I hear you. So I think it's even less likely that kindergarten, that they're sending them home with homework.
As I will say, even the ECC, so even preschool, there, there are like, there's packets and other things that they send home to do. And there are still Zoom calls that, that he can do. And so it's tough. And so I don't know, some of those scavenger hunts and other things, I mean, kindergarten, it is difficult, but they are making, I guess, I wish I had, give me one. But it's tough. There are some things they're sending. I do know that.
Well, they send homework home with kids too, so, anyway, like I said, I...
So there's two things here. One semantic, which is we, the original article said, full-day kindergarten, and we thought that was wicked confusing. And then so it went to hybrid because it was, it seemed it was more, more explanatory. So I don't know what another word would be. The real issue is there are insufficient funds in the school budget to accommodate all the weirdness around trying to educate kindergarten students. I, I think that's, is that, would you agree with that assessment, Mr. Vignani, Mr. Goodrich, having gone through the financial? So semantically, I don't know what a better word is. We already tried two. I think it'll be up to the advisory and to us to be able to articulate this to the, to the town meeting. It's kind of my thought on it. Anyone feel, want to add to that?
No, I mean, we're just subsidizing a kindergarten program that got derailed because of pandemic, so...
Well, see, I personally think we're subsidizing the schools because of COVID and that there are holes in the budget probably all over the place. And I don't think it's simply attributable to the loss of the full-day kindergarten tuition. So, anyway, I'm done.
Yeah, I mean, they've explained that this component is. So, this isn't going to pay for a French teacher. This is going to pay for the kindergarten program that they described to us that was supposed to be full-time, that they had to cut the classes in half and make everybody go half-day, or excuse me, go...
Half-day.
Half-day, four days a week. So...
All right. So the question before the board, because there were some additional questions, and I thank our colleagues from, for going out and, and researching them. Does anyone feel, based on the information that they provided, that we need to revisit our vote? Because as it is, I believe this, I don't have it in front of me. I think this was unanimous, 5-1 that we supported it. And so...
I don't think so. I thank Andrew and Tony for going in and asking some more detailed questions. So thanks, gentlemen.
Okay. Before we go on to the assignment and the others, there is a, at least one raised hand on this. I assume it's on this matter.
First, before we get to that.
Yep.
See, if I could, I want to update you on Article 7, the capital improvement plan.
Oh, sure.
We did have the bids for the Hamerock Fire Station come in. Nancy and Chief Murphy and I and Bertax went over those today. Depending upon the final reimbursement from the $100,000 that the state promised us, we are still about 100 to 100 and a half short of what we need. If you go in Nancy's office, we emptied out every drawer in our office, checking out, looking for extra money today. We're going to keep looking for that. We're going to try to do some value engineering to try to come up with the additional funds necessary. But I think at this point, we go forward with the $500,000. I don't think we can add to that on town meeting floor. To add $100,000 would be a 20% change. I think that'd be ruled out of order. But we're going to meet with the chief and talk to our OPM and see if we can come up with some extra funds and some value engineering to get that down so we can proceed with that project this winter instead of having to wait till the spring.
And should that not be possible, get withdrawn for another meeting?
Well, we would, we would put the $500,000 in, then we would have to go back and redo it and see what else we would need in the spring.
Okay. Any questions about the Hamerock Fire Station and that capital item? No? Okay. All right. If there's not an objection, I will go to Mr. Noiz and ask you, or I'm muting you, if you just give your name and address and, and that's why you have your hand raised.
Yeah, my name's Peter Noiz. I live at 35 Cliff Road South in Hamerock. Yes, my question ties into both Article 7 and Article 3. Can I ask my Article 3 question first?
Sure.
Okay, Article 3, I was, I attended the last selectmen's meeting. And just for clarification, the $450,000 is what the town meeting is going to vote for in Article 3? Is that correct?
Yes.
It's to appropriate, it's not going to, town meeting's not going to argue about the relative merits of hybrid and, you know, and/or fees or anything else. They're going to just vote to approve or not approve the $450,000.
Correct.
And did I also understand correctly that, and I'm not sure you have the school superintendent here, but that $450,000 was primarily because you waived the fees for full-time kindergarten?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's the click notes, yes.
And that's the full, the whole $450 came from that?
The, as I understand it, there was a significant, there was a much bigger significant loss of income. Jim, do you have the details in your head?
Tony and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that loss of, it was over $700,000 from the kindergarten fees. And the schools were able to make some of that up within their own budget. And this is the delta they need to maintain the kindergarten classes as they have them.
Because they weren't able to charge the regular fee of whatever it is, $3,500 for people to go full-time. Because they don't have a full-time program to offer.
Okay. Does that answer your Article 3 question?
No. I mean, that answered, that answers my question about the procedural thing to, where the shortfall came from. And it seems like that's, that's, that's just part of the COVID problem, so you've got that shortfall. I guess you don't save anything by, by going a half-day. And it wasn't fair to charge the parents when they really weren't getting that service, so... But now my next question comes to the, I guess it's towards the town administrator or Nancy Holt. The $450,000 from the stabilization fund, can she give us a insight as to, you know, what's the status of the stabilization fund is? Before and after that $450,000? If it's, I assume it's going to, it's been recommended to be approved by the advisory board? And that's, you know, so the status before that and then after that, that $450,000 is, is allocated at Article 3?
Ms. Holt, would you like to field this?
So the current balance in the stabilization fund is $4.5 million. And town meeting has an annual article, which we did vote in June, that any excess levy capacity, we then raise and appropriate as part of the tax recap process and sweep that into the stabilization fund as well every year. So we would expect there would be additional funds that will go into stabilization once the tax rate is set next month. But we do have $4.5 million in it currently to address the $450,000 ask.
So just to use round numbers, if that's approved, then there'll be $4 million left in the stabilization fund after that money is allocated in your spreadsheet.
Correct.
But that's also not taking into consideration that it could get reimbursed by the COVID fund?
It might be, but you might, if, yeah, if there's a stimulus and further federal money or whatever. But the bottom line is, the stabilization fund will still have $4 million after this is approved.
Yes, and Vice Chair Mr. Vignani is correct that there is a claim in with Plymouth County currently for just over $52,000 for the cost to date for that program. And we have, I've spoken to the county treasurer and told them that we have a special town meeting on November 16th in the hopes that the county commissioners might make a decision on that claim. So we would be able to tell town meeting one way or the other if we're ever going to receive any reimbursement for this.
Great. Oh, I think we've been unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Noiz. Those are great questions, and we will be...
I have questions for Article 7, but I don't know...
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Yeah, go ahead.
I haven't forgotten. That's the real reason I'm here. But...
Because you live in Hamerock. Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm sure you can figure out where I'm, where I'm coming from. I guess the simple question is, is this board tonight obligated to vote to award the contract a lowest responsible bidder based on the fire station bids that were opened on Friday?
Yes.
Yes, the short answer is yes.
So I'd like to, Mark Curran's always been our advocate in Hamerock, but I assume we're going to make the motion to, you know, to quote the, let's see, I got the, you know, that the, the town will vote, I mean, and that, you know, to award the contract the lowest responsible bidder pending approval of the funding. But that's where I'm getting some disconnect. Mr. Bedrow said you weren't going to approve all the funding. You're going to leave it short, $150,000. But wouldn't it make sense that the stabilization fund be utilized for this public safety project? And the board at least vote tonight to fully fund it at town meeting on the 16th?
We have put a number in the warrant at $500,000. We looked at the numbers. We were hoping that was sufficient. I don't believe that we can add to that at town meeting because the warrant has been posted at 500. We'll ask that question to council. But we are going to try to find the funds to award that contract. That's what we're looking for.
I asked that question of council this afternoon, and the answer was no. We could not change it.
Okay.
And is it inappropriate, then, if that's a fact, which it is, I guess, you've just stated as a fact, that the board tonight needs to vote to, to not award the contract?
That's not before the board tonight. We have 30 days or 45 days, I forget.
At least 30.
We have at least 30 days to award that contract, so... We have at least thirty days to award that contract. So, I'm going to be meeting with Nancy and the chief and the OPM on the project to see if there's a way we can close that gap.
Well, how does town, can, would it not be appropriate for town meeting to have the option to vote to take the gap from the stabilization fund?
Council will not allow you to raise that by that much money because it's beyond the scope of the article.
Right.
I one hundred percent disagree. The article, if you read it, says, you know, one point six million or any greater or lesser sums as may be necessary. I mean, I, I disagree. I'm not a lawyer, but I, I've been around town meetings and public works, and I believe Article seven gives you all the ability to raise, you know, greater or lesser sums as written.
Okay. Mr. Noyes, we will take that in consideration and the board will ask council again. We're none, I don't think any of us are lawyers either, so we will have to rely on council on that. I think that since we're meeting shortly, you know, I don't know, less than, less than two weeks, that as Jim's, as Mr. Boudreaux said, the original funding, which we thought was going to be sufficient, will be before town meeting. And between now and then, we will look under all the pillows to see where we can find the balance if necessary. And also, I, we've seen on lots of these public works, and you know this in your work, they haven't even begun the con, the, the conversation about value engineering. You know, and, you know, that may be, that may be useful in this exercise as well. So, the contract, we have plenty of time to have those conversations, I believe, before we need to have the conversation about awarding the contract. And, and I personally would, would want to go through those steps before we did, we did assign that contract. So, does the board have anything else they want to add about the Hammerock Station, or Jim, or Nancy? No?
Well, as you said, we're going to keep working on it. And if we think we're getting close, we can always have the option of extending the, the time to sign the contract with the bidder. So.
Mr. Noyes, you have your hand up. I will give you one more question, but then we are going to have to go on because apparently there's a election tonight and we want to, we want to move on through the agenda. So, I think I've unmuted you again.
My simple question is, is when, will the public be able to know when the board is going to vote on whether or not to award that contract?
That's a great question. So, as always, all contracts are posted on our agenda. So, that's the best way. But I would assume that it would be closely following our town meeting on the sixteenth. And I, I actually think our.
Chair, may I, might, may I point out something?
Yes, please.
We, Nancy and the, and the board also always requires great detail on the funding of any contract that we award. So, we wouldn't award a contract if there were insufficient funds to support it. So, I have confidence, you know, in Nancy. I understand what your, your challenge is, but please know that we wouldn't award a contract unless we knew there were sufficient funds to pay for and where those funds were coming from.
Yeah, it's illegal. You have to, you have to have sufficient funds to award a contract.
Thank you for that. Yeah, we got that.
If we amend the act to put additional funds into this town meeting, it just means we'll have to do it in the spring. We'll delay the project, but we're still going forward with the project as soon as we can. We don't need.
Yeah.
And.
Last question, Mr. Noyes. You good? Okay. Thank you. Those are very good questions. So, we're discussing voting and signing the warrant articles. So, we've discussed the articles. Is there any other discussion on the articles? We've already voted to support or not support the ones as presented? Any other discussion? Okay. Then, and I didn't see any indication that anybody wanted to make a motion to vote, really consider any. So, we'll move past that, which leaves us to the fun part of the agenda, which is assigning our warrant articles. Jim, have you had a chance to, to consider what might be in consent? Not that, I mean, we'll sign anyway, but. Nope, did you?
Absolutely, we did. Now, Nancy, do you have that? Because of course you gave me my copy and I don't know what I do with it.
So, what was being considered for consent would be Article one, unpaid bills. Article two, the budget reconciliations. Article four, the transfers to reserves. Well, let's do it this way. What's not going to be in consent would be Article three, kindergarten article. Article seven, the capital plan. Article eight, community preservation. Article eleven, the sale and lease of the mine at Fire Station in seniors, old senior center building. And Article sixteen, which was the South Shore Community Action Petition Article.
Okay.
So, there's five that aren't in the consent agenda currently.
Okay. Um, do, sorry?
I thought some of the. Karen, which, after community preservation, what were the other ones?
Number eleven, the sale and lease of property.
Oh, that's the one I was looking for. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Um, so, do we want? I would say, I mean, we could put, should we just put all the consent with one person? The only one I would.
Oh, because they could not pass.
Yeah, somebody might pull it out. Yeah, you're right. Let's go through.
Maybe each one of us should do one of the five that definitely are not going to be.
Yeah, that's a good idea. So, those are, let's start with those. So, number three is the poorly named hybrid kindergarten. Would, would someone like to assign that? Otherwise, I'd recommend one of the school committee.
I'll do that one.
Okay, Tony. Number seven is the capital plan. Who's the liaison for that? And do you want to do it? Capital planning. Yeah.
I'll do it. I'm not the liaison, but I'll do it.
You want to do it? Okay. Maura, has the CPC?
I'll do eight.
Yeah. And eight is CPC K two. Number eleven is the property sales, mine it, and the council on aging buildings. I'd like to not do that because I live near mine of them.
Well, I will do it then.
All right, Mr. Goodrich. Um, gender neutral bylaw, I would love to do that if no one has an objection.
I think sixteen was, not fifteen.
That's, oh, that's, fifteen is gender neutral, right?
I think that's on the consent.
Oh, was it, Nancy? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Yep, we'll get to that.
I don't think it should be though, honestly. I don't think that should be in a consent. That's a big change for this town. I don't think that should be a consent vote. That's my humble opinion on that one.
Well, I don't, I, I suspect there won't be a lot of pushback on it, which is why it's on the consent.
That's true.
It's about time. And somebody might.
But it doesn't get the opportunity to really be discussed, so.
Maura, all you have to do is say yes.
Just say, hold it.
Hold.
Okay, okay.
Well, does this board want it in the consent agenda? Do we get to decide that? Who decides that? The town moderator or us?
Jim does, I thought.
Oh, Jim. He recommends.
Recommend.
At the general.
Recommend. All right. So, leave it in consent because we have COVID and and perfectly content if somebody pulls it out for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. And if they pull out for discussion, can I be the person?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, thank you for that. And so that, then, number sixteen is, is that happening? Which is the south, the citizen petition for the funding of.
Still on there.
It's on there. We haven't heard from anybody, so.
All right. Who would like to handle that? That, as you know, was not supported by the board.
That's yours.
It's me?
You're the only one that didn't take one of the ones that is happening.
Oh, all right. That's right. Thank you. You're just such a good VC. All right. So, we do need to assign the consent as well, just in case somebody puts a hold. Typically, in past meetings, one, unpaid bills, two, fiscal reconciliation, four, transfer reserves, and five, retirement of debt are, and I would think six borrowing rescissions are pretty routine matters. And we usually, I think, in the past.
The chair usually does it.
Okay, so I, I'll get those fun-filled ones. Number nine is the Special Education Reserve Fund. Would one of our.
I'll do it.
Tony? Okay. Number fourteen is Street Acceptance Studley Farm Road.
I'll do it.
Oh, you want to fight?
What about ten?
Uh, oh, sorry. I had it because I didn't, I didn't circle it right. All right, wait. Are you raising ten for the dog? All right, Mr. Mr. Brand new puppy man. All right, so K two, you get fourteen, even though I skipped over. Twelve is the cell, lease cell tower.
Guess that's me.
Yay, Maura. Okay. And then that, we already talked about fifteen. Did I get them all?
Who's doing Studley Farm?
Uh, Karen.
Karen.
Me too. Karen Connelly.
Wait.
All right. Is that everything? I'm happy to.
Michelle, are you good with that? I can review that with you tomorrow if you didn't get it all.
We can do that, or I can quickly go over what I think I have.
Why don't you just confirm so we know you have them?
Okay. I'm just going to go through each one. So, number one, Karen Campfield. Number two, Karen Campfield. Number three, Mr. Vignani. Four and five is also Karen Campfield. And six, seven, Maura Curran. Eight, Karen Connelly. Nine, Mr. Vignani. Ten, Mr. Goodrich. Eleven, can't even read my writing. Eleven is Mr. Goodrich. Twelve is Ms. Curran. Fourteen, Ms. Connelly. And fifteen and sixteen, Ms. Campfield. Did I get all that?
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Great. So, that is us, takes us to new business, which is to discuss about the twenty twenty-one annual town meeting date, necessary so that calendars and notices can be put together. And pray that we are able to meet on the date that's proposed. I cannot find it. It's April something.
April twen, April twelfth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Any comments on that, Mr. Boudreaux, or? Would you like to make a comment, or would you like to just go to a motion?
I think we should go to a motion.
So, that's not school vacation week, right?
Not that I'm aware of.
Believe so. Oh, I'm sorry. I do see a hand.
Did he get vacation?
I, I think the comment was that all of the religious holidays and everything else was checked, but I didn't personally confirm that.
Motion, move the board of selectmen vote to.
You know what? Let me, Mr. Noyes does have a hand raised on this. So, Mr. Noyes, would you just say, give your address again for Michelle?
Hi, it's Peter Noyes, thirty-five Cliff Road South. My question went back to the, the special town meeting, but it applies to the, to the spring town meeting. Just a procedural question. Does the town charter, or, or, I know it's tradition, that would you have a moderator's meeting similar to this meeting prior to town meeting? That's so the public, like myself, can, can not have to ask Robert's Rules of Order questions at the meeting, that the moderator is going to help sort out the procedural stuff? Is that moderator's meeting something that, that he has to have? I know in the past, it's been like within a few days before the meeting. I know the moderator's here.
We have, we held one moderator's meeting already just because of the COVID complications, you know, trying to figure out where we could have it and how we could have it and that sort of thing. Jim, do you know what the moderator intends? I'm trying to pull up the charter because I don't know if it's spelled out.
I don't think it's a charter requirement that I know of, but he generally has a moderator's meeting before every town meeting. Can't think of any town I've been in or any moderator that has it. It'll probably be a Zoom meeting, but.
And that would be posted like any other meeting. We're just going through the charter review and I don't, I don't think it's specified in there, but that's something to think about.
There's one on the town, on the town website, but it got confusing. I think it's November fourth, two thousand nineteen was the moderator's meeting for your special last year, I think. But it's, it does some old stuff. I don't think there was one scheduled for this special.
Yeah, we had a, we had a logistics one because of, obviously, the complications of trying to get people together and make sure that we could do it safely. So, Jim, would you follow up with the moderator and see if he intends to? He has not announced one yet. So, the short answer is he has not announced one yet, but in practice, in the past, we have had them.
Am I also correct that, I, I know you guys meet every two weeks. Is that, and, but are you, have you chosen to meet on the Monday night instead of the Tuesday night, that two weeks from today?
Well, the, the board of selectmen meet every two weeks on a Tuesday, generally.
Are you still meeting on the seventeenth, or are you going to meet on the?
The board will be posted for the sixteenth. The board is posted for town meeting, if that's your question, Peter.
Yeah.
Well, you, I guess what, what I thought you were doing, but I'm unclear, you're, you're having a meeting a half an hour before the town meeting?
Oh, that's, yeah, we always do that just in case there, let's, you know, there's some, some change that we need to discuss or some small contract or whatever. But I do believe we are scheduled for a regular, normal meeting the next night.
Okay, so, so that meeting would, would be a follow-up to, I guess. I don't know what that means, what's on that agenda, but that'll be posted. But you have a meeting at six thirty on the night of town meeting? Is that correct?
That is, that is always posted and, and there as, I mean, quite honestly, it's a placeholder. If something comes up that we need to discuss as a board before town meeting commences. Let's say we get a material information that changes one of our, our, our consideration about a vote. It doesn't happen very often. But if we don't have that posted, we can't have that conversation.
I'm just, with the COVID thing, I was trying to figure out where that meeting would be. Would it be Zoom?
It would be at, at, at the, it'll be right there before the town meeting in the, in the gym.
So, it'll be in the gym, the same, or the, is it the room of the gym? Okay. No, that, that's fine. I didn't know if it was at the hearing room at town hall or on Zoom, but.
No, no, no. The, we're all going to be in person in the gym at this moment pending any, you know, COVID-related change. All right. And then we, I see Ms. Burke has her hand raised. Oh, Mr. Goodrich, would you like to say something?
Yeah, just on, on, on that, the point with the moderator meeting, I know we're going to check whether or not he will be having one. Would it be appropriate for this board to at least suggest or say that we think he should have a Zoom meeting before? I don't, I don't know if that is appropriate or not, but it just seems, given COVID and not being able to do one in person, it would, for folks to be able to ask questions ahead of time, might be valuable if the answer is there wasn't a plan.
Well, I, I suspect he would be quite open to having that conversation. But technically, he's an elected official that run, is in charge of making, you know, deciding those things on his own. But he, we did briefly talk about it at the logistics meeting. And he personally said that in other towns, it's much more robust than we've done in the past and kind of likes that. So, I think we'll leave that, you know, if you guys agree, leave it to Jim to, to follow up with him and just see what his intentions are and let him know that.
But I, I would just say, we, we sent a letter on the MBTA to other elected officials. I don't know if it's always out of our purview to just give our recommendation. And maybe the board disagrees that he should have one. I just, I thought it would be important for folks to have a chance to ask prior. So, that's all.
Anyone else want to? I think the, the difference with this agenda is we try to keep it as, it's, it, I think if we had a lot more things on it, I think it's great for education. And, you know, I personally would be happy to talk to him about it because, you know, we love these Zoom calls and they are informative. Karen, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I'll just say that sometimes the moderator's meeting is very controversial because there are big things on the warrant. And sometimes they're extremely routine because there's nothing controversial. But, you know, in my experience, the moderator has always had a meeting prior, whether it was controversial or not. So, I wouldn't think that he wouldn't have. It, and I don't think that we need to tell him that.
Okay. But, yeah. We're talking all the time because everything's weird now.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. If the board is okay, there is another hand raised from a participant. And go quickly to Ms. Burke.
Hi, sorry, again.
You're, would you just give your name and address again for Michelle?
Yes, Mary, ninety-three Marion Road. It is the first night of Ramadan, just to point out.
The sixteenth?
Oh, the twel, the twelfth.
The twelve.
Yeah, so I don't know if you want to consider moving it up a week, but just, just to point that out. So, because then it does go until May, I don't know the exact date, but I just wanted to point that out.
Is, is it a whole month?
It, it goes through, eh, yeah, it'll extend at least, it'll, I think it'll be too late. It does go towards the end of May. I don't know the exact date.
Yeah, it's long.
But it, so you might want to consider just possibly we up.
Okay, so, yeah, there's, there's, Jim, I mean, you obviously know this better than I, but there's, yeah, there's like a calendar that you kind of work backwards from. How much wiggle room is in that date? How much wiggle room is in that date, Jim?
Yes, you know?
I do know some towns have already said it, but I know that with the work that we're doing, and the segments that we've made, and, and moving forward, it's just something we probably wanna consider.
So Stephanie, if, if I may ask, so would the, the objection would be that it's the first night versus we couldn't have a meeting from, from April twelfth all the way through the end of May?
I mean, it's the evening times that you're usually, um, and everyone's different in how they practice, I mean, but you're fasting, and you're, um, and I'm not a hundred percent familiar, so I, I feel very, I don't feel comfortable speaking on it. I do know, just from growing up and having friends, um, I just, very often, I just know that date and around that time, people being able and unable to participate.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry I didn't look that up, because I thought, I thought that had.
Well.
A quick Google, are you, are we sure it says April thirteenth? I don't know, Google could be wrong.
So there's the evening, I believe it begins on the evening of April twelfth, um, but it could be the same, so.
It probably starts at sundown or something.
Jim, is this a vote we need to take tonight? Nancy definitely has her hand up. Sorry.
Just wanna point out that it's set by the general bylaws, section two oh one four zero, that the, the town meeting shall be held on the second Monday in April. So that's where the date's coming from, it's not really arbitrary.
That's, that's what I was trying to work on.
In the past, though, Nancy, when it's, when it's become an issue, like we've moved town meetings sometimes to a Wednesday, or, you know.
Right, right.
Does that Ramadan began, begins on April twelfth and ends, yeah, Tuesday, May eleventh, if it's just that first evening, that's, you know, a very high honor, I think we should respect that.
Yeah, so, so back to the question, is, is there, is, do we need to make this decision tonight? Or can we look at our options, knowing, not having, taking that into consideration?
We can wait, but the charter dictates when we have to have it, too.
Yeah, but Maura's right, I mean, there, if there's extenuating circumstances.
We can do it Wednesday instead of Monday, certainly.
Right. Right, so maybe we look, I mean, and I don't know if there's school week, I don't know. That's what I mean, we need to do, we can't just decide what the date is without doing a little homework. And if that one's, if it's problematic, then, and we don't have to vote it tonight, why don't we do that homework and, and revisit it?
Okay, move on.
All right, any objection to that?
No.
Ms. Burke, thank you for your service to the community, so that we didn't make a mistake. Um, okay, we will, we will revisit that next meeting, then. Nancy, you okay with that? Okay. Jim's just not talking to us anymore.
Looking something up and.
Our, our next item is to discuss and vote a new drain layers license for TruX Corporation. Uh, we received reams of backup on this firm.
Want a motion?
Yes, please.
Move to approve a new drain layers license for TruX Corporation.
Second, Ms. Curran, and we'll need a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the last item on new business is to discuss vote board committee appointments. Um, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are going to not attempt to try to populate diversity, because there's, we're gonna need two on all of these wonderful applicants. So that leaves recreation and water resources. And I'll remind the board, we have, recreation is tab twenty in our handy dandy books. We have one opening on recreation, and two excellent candidates, Jennifer O'Neill and Mike Riga, I hope I said that right, um, who were interviewed at our past meeting. Both had a lot of skills and, um, had a lot to offer. We did receive a glowing endorsement on Ms. O'Neill. And Mr. Riga has, um, family that actually serves on this committee as well, so he's gonna, both of, yeah, they're both really great candidates.
Great candidates.
Uh, so unfortunately, we only have one opening on this board. Has anyone, um, would anyone like to add to our consideration on this? Or is somebody in a mood to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion. Move to approve Jennifer O'Neill to the Recreation Commission for a term of one year, or until a successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days. And it's correct that that's just for one year?
I was gonna ask the same question.
I think so. Unless it's a replacement, did someone resign?
Yes, Jennifer McCollum resigned, that's why.
Oh, that's why.
Oh, that's why.
Then I, then motion as stated.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. Is there a second?
I'll second Jennifer.
Second.
I think Mike would do a great job, but I think Jennifer's great as well.
Okay, yeah, I know, it's, I mean, the great, we have a lot of those where we can't make a bad choice. So we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero. Welcome to Jennifer, and thank you, Mike, Don't Go Far. Um, and, um, I'll remind everyone that, oh, well, today's election day. We were not gonna swear anybody in until we're happy recovered from this. So, um, I forget when the date, when we say the eleventh, after the eleven?
Think so.
Yeah, um, those who are appointed will need to get sworn in, and, um, um, I'm sure, and Lorraine and, and Michelle will walk you through the next steps. Um, the next is our water resources, which is tab twenty-five. Um, we were very fortunate with, Adam Schlipp never, he didn't arrive, he didn't come, right? So I don't know what happened to him, but, so we had interviewed one, two, three, four people. Since we did that, there has been a resignation, so there are now two openings to the board. We also have a renewal for this board. Um, Becky Malamet is our longstanding chair, and she is up for reappointment. Um, so we should start with her, because we don't necessarily have to report, reappoint people on the board. Um, and that will determine if we just, for whatever reason, felt that it was time to, to, um, bring new people in, that would have put another spot. So I would suggest that we discuss the reappointment of Becky Malamet before we go on to the new appointments.
Ms. Chair, who was the person that resigned?
Uh, Shirley Young.
Oh.
She, um, in her letter of resignation, she very magnanimously wanted to make room, because there were so many great candidates, and thought that it would be useful to the committee to have some new voices, so thank you for your long service to the committee.
And I, I would add with that resignation, that it might be wise, I know Becky's been there since two thousand twelve, and, and typically, we like to open up a spot for other folks, but I would argue, um, that maybe her longevity would be beneficial to, to reappoint for another term, just because everybody else on that board has only been there for a year. Um, and, I, I mean, I think consistency is important, and two new members will, will give some nice, um, you know, new perspective as well, in resources.
Yes, and she has served this committee with.
I would make a motion if the board would so be inclined.
And if there are further questions or comments, otherwise we'll accept a motion on that? Did, I saw hands waving, did you wanna make?
I didn't know, Andrew, did you wanna say something?
No, I, 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 again, Becky has been just fabulous to work with, and I, I, the institutional knowledge, I think, is so critically important, um, just given some of the, um, the issues. So, yeah, I would, I would second the motion, which I.
Which is about to be made. Okay, Ms. Curran, would you like?
So I'll make a motion to, uh, reappoint Becky Malamet to the Water Resources Commission for a term of three years. And I don't have all the rest.
Or until successor is named and completion.
Or until successor is named, pending completion of the ethics.
And.
Against. Yeah. And online, online form or training.
Goodbye, Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Any further comments? Seeing none, we will take a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, Becky, you're not getting far, thank you for your service. Um, okay, so that confirms that now there are two openings on this commission. Um, and we had, as we said, one, two, three, four really good applicants. Um, Mr. Miller, Mr. Nois, Ms. Schlegel, and Ms. Simmer. Um, all with different, all with different skillsets. Would anyone like to comment on our applicants, or? Uh, and, and we do have a hand, so before we vote, we'll go to, to Ms. Schlenk, I always say your name wrong, Jean, but, um, the board, would you like to comment on our applicants, or? Should we make any motions before we hear what the public wants to say on this matter? Okay. And the objection to going to a public comment? Okay. So I will unmute Jean, and apologize for not being able to guess your last name spelling. Again, I always do it wrong, so. Jean, if you would state your name and your address again for the.
Jean Schultneck, five-eleven Heatherly Road. Um, I actually had a question, which might be partly answered by listening to you discuss these appointments, so, um, can you come back to me afterwards?
Okay, or is it just about appointments?
Yeah, just kind of the process.
Okay.
But, yeah, let me listen to this, and then I'll ask afterwards.
Okay, well, hopefully it'll answer it along the way, so raise your hand, we down.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so.
Do you want a motion?
If you're prepared to make one, yes.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make one, if I. I, I move to appoint, um, Emily Schimmer to, uh, the Water Resource Committee for a term of three years, until successor is named, and completion of the Conflict of Interest Law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second. Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Connolly. Is there any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes five zero. Welcome, Emily, and thank you for volunteering. Um, and that leaves us one slot. Is there anyone in particular that the board would like to advocate for, or make a motion? Mr. Goodrich?
So I, I was gonna nominate, uh, Freya Schlegel, um, just given her activism and her interest in the subject, and talking to the Water Resource Committee writ large, there's gonna be some emphasis on some other things within, I think, her skillset with, um, hardscaping and landscaping and other, uh, water conservation efforts. Uh, and I think there is a feeling that that might be a good, uh, addition, as it's, it's a bit different, uh, kind of an outlook, um, given, um, some of those priorities, given the next few years, so.
I, I actually would like to support that, um, you know, very, people are engaged in lots of different things that are important to him, to them, and, um, Freya has been a frequent flyer at our meetings, because, uh, she's passionate about this topic and, and in the community, so, you know, that's, she brings a lot of background to this position.
I, I agree, I, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I guess we, could we have a, an official, um, motion, please? So move to, yeah. Andrew?
I, I move to appoint, um, Freya Schlegel to the Water Resources Commission, or until a successor is named, or the online training is completed.
For three years.
For, uh, a term of three years.
And seconded by Mr. Vignani? Is there any further discussion on that matter? Okay, seeing none, uh, we will have a roll call vote.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. I believe that concludes our, um, discussion and votes of appointments for this evening, um, which would take us to other business. Do we have any liaison reports?
Uh, there's a hand raised, Karen?
Oh, I'm sorry, I promised, I, I've got two screens up. Jean, I will come back to you now, I apologize, and thank you again, Mr. Vignani.
Hi, thanks. Uh, so Jean, Jean Schultneck, five-eleven Heatherly Road. Um, so that helped a little bit, I'm just curious about the process for how you select your appointees from, from a list of candidates. Um, that was relatively easy, it was a small, relatively small group of applicants. You narrowed it down and voted unanimously really quickly on two of those. Uh, for the DEI committee, I'm guessing it's a little bit more complicated. Um, and I think it's a multi-part question, because, first of all, you have the, have the composition of the committee that you guys established originally, and that you've had the applicants discuss. So I'm wondering, first of all, have you decided exactly how many of those seats are going to sort of town officials and employees? Or are, are some of those seats sort of, you know, becoming up for grabs for, uh, members at large from the community, or, or are all of those, those seats going to be filled by quote-unquote folks from the town? So that's one question, and then sort of a similar question, you had also listed a couple of different organizations, and the ministers, the clergy association, as having sort of a, um, you know, a, a reserved seat at the table. Are, are those groups going to be given first consideration, and definitely a seat for at least one member representing each of those organizations? And then the main question is, how, how do you get from eighteen applicants down to however many that ends up being, once you've decided those first two questions? And, um, I mean, do you foresee doing that at your next meeting? And it will, will it happen, and a vote happen at the next meeting? Or will it take a while? Or how, how do you foresee this process working, working its way out?
Okay, those, those are four really good questions. I'll, I'll try to take, pass at it, and then I, I'm sure that the board will fill in the blanks where I, I missed, because, so the first question is, uh, well, I guess the first set, two questions. The reason we are not trying to do that tonight is because all of the above is, has to be discussed, and, you know, we don't often have the constellation of having a brand-new committee and having so many qualified, good people. So it's a good problem to have, and we're going to do it in, in, in careful deliberation, and the goal is to have that conversation at our next meeting, because we, I think we all feel that it needs to be done, um, in that manner. Um, as to how many seats, how's it gonna be, that will be part of the conversation. And we learned a lot, I mean, I personally, and I, uh, the board can speak for themselves, but we knew because of the process, we would learn a lot from the people that were interested in this, and where the skillsets were. Um, and, and, you know, maybe that will influence how many seats end up being at large, because, you know, for an example, you know, somebody has a particular skill in, in policies and procedures, there are a number of people that we interviewed that do, so maybe we don't need to have necessarily our human resources person's name, maybe they become a liaison. That's the conversation we'll have to have, but we couldn't really have that conversation till we went through the process of asking for applicants and learning what their skillsets were. So we'll do that at the next meeting, and I, I think that's one, two, and three. The fourth question is, how do we deliberate? We're all gonna have to go through our notes and see what we think are the strengths, and when we come together, we'll have that conversation as a group. Um, and it's gonna be hard, I mean, there's no question it's gonna be hard, because we absolutely are not gonna end up with enough seats for all of the excellent people that raised their hand, in my view. Um, but we'll have that conversation at the next meeting, and I, I hope that we can have enough. that we can have enough of a conversation in the comfort level after considering for two weeks that we can vote next week. But well, it'll, honestly, it'll have to, we'll have to see where we come out. If we're still wringing our hands over the composition, it might take a little bit longer, but we want to get it right. I'll leave it to the board because I'm sure I missed something. Is there somebody, would somebody like to add to that? Oh, good.
Well, well said.
I hope that answers your question, Jean. If not.
It does, yes, that was an excellent answer and I'm very happy that you have such a hard job in front of you because I agree, it's a fabulous, fabulous group of people who have applied. So I think, I think it's, I think it's a good problem to have, so thank you for doing the work.
I 100% agree with you.
Thanks to all of the applicants, you're all amazing, so.
I agree with you.
Been really great listening.
Your question, and if there are no other little hands up on my little screen, okay. And I will go on to, any hands, Mr. Biniani, am I good? All right, are there any liaison reports for this evening? We've all been off with everything else going on, right?
I know everybody wants to go, but I really want to just call out the great work of Lawson Green. And what was accomplished on Friday, just really quickly, if you, if you missed it. Mike Cucciara from the Grantham Group, along with Steve Irish and Ruth Wagner from the Affordable Housing Trust, were privileged to pull lottery numbers, if you will, that were assigned to applicants for the Lawson Green Senior Affordable Housing, where there are 30 units that are up for grads, if you will. Four of them have to meet all requirements for 30% of the AMI, which is the average median income of residents here in Situate. And then the other 26 were for 60% of the average median income. And they also pulled folks to be on a waitlist. So they are reaching out to all those winners and doing their due diligence. And the Lawson Green is set to hopefully take occupancy in February. So it's a great story and it's moving along and it was a really proud day in Situate on Friday. So if you missed it, you can, you can watch the, the pulling of the lottery numbers that took place Friday morning. So that was it.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. I meant to ask you to give that update at the beginning so more people could hear it, but.
I know, sorry.
Who's, I know, I can't keep referring, who's, who's doing the video on Monday? That might be a really good thing to just.
That would be me.
All right, Ms. Connolly, would you put that on your list, please?
Absolutely, absolutely. Laura, how many, how many, how many people were in the drawing, do you know? I knew you were going to ask me that. I think 80. Oh, okay, great, great. Yeah, they had quite the extensive waitlist. Yep, that's good, I mean, good enough. They all have to be, they all have to be further qualified, though. They all kind of met that bare minimum and then there's a deep break, so it happens. Yeah, right.
Well, it sure demonstrates the need, huh?
It does. Yeah.
Any other liaison reports this evening? All right, I just want to hold up one visual. This is the count, the schedule from the Counts on Aging on all of their remote programming. So I just want to give a shout out to our Counts on Aging that despite all of this madness, they are finding ways to engage and, and, and reach out to our seniors. So thanks for doing that. If there are no other liaison reports, I will ask Madam Clerk if there are correspondence.
There, well, there was a couple of things, but they've all been covered in the, the meeting tonight, so. The veterans, the veterans' invitation, we did get that, but again, it was discussed, so.
All right, then we will move to approval of minutes. I did want to note, there was one, I don't remember which one it is, the vote on our equity statement. Has Mr. Biniani voting no, which he did not? I know, it says 5-0 and then in the breakout, it says, Mr. Biniani, no. So I would like that noted to be corrected because the whole board did support it. So just, that's for you, Johnny. Does anyone else have any comments on the, there's two sets, I believe, of minutes to be approved? No others? Then I will accept motions if anyone can find them.
Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectment meetings on October 6, 2020, October 15, 2020, and October 20, 2020. Move to accept and not re, well, just.
Do that one first.
Okay, then that's done.
Okay, motion by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Ms. Curran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0, and you have another?
Move to accept and not release the executive session minutes for the Board of Selectment meeting held on October 6, 2020, since the matter discussed is still pending at this time.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, is her second.
Second.
By Mr. Biniani, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Passes 5-0. Our last motion would be for adjournment and signing of documents. We will not be signing them tonight, but Lorraine would love to see you all down at Town Hall tomorrow with your books and your pens. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Biniani. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Campfield?
Yes.
Mr. Biniani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating and we will see you next, I think, at our, our video update on Monday morning.